Trying to sustain. And is this it tomorrow, a day and day? Do you get your brief tomorrow? Or is it?
I have a few. But compared to what you're so good. How are you?
I mean, I mean, you know. I, I, I wish I felt a greater sense of control for the situation. This is, this is right, public office, so I'm, I'm. I am loving it. I actually really, really enjoy it.
I totally be a target. Having a seat at the table. Like deeper understanding. Appreciate here any people's, uh, take on different things.
Not yet.
I am. I, I'm actually very much enjoying it.
My sons are back in.
Wife is very concerned about me, even from like that and everything. She, um. She wears things tight. You got a lot of, you got a lot of. So she, and I, and I, and she is worried about, um, you know, this community.
I'm. Well, it's. And I feel so much forward.
Yeah, but I, I just, I really, uh. I just so appreciate.
Because Grandma, we have to have to vote. Not some people can't vote because of values, right?
Yeah, no, it's, I, I wish.
Just a little announcement here. Citizens Budget Committee ran over a tad, so we're not going to start till 6:10 if you want to use the restroom or anything. We're waiting on our counselor colleagues to recover from. This is their fourth public meeting in three days.
So how was San Diego?
That was good. Quick trip.
Oh, really?
We flew down. But it's the, you gotta go through Portland to get to San Diego.
So we actually.
Oh, I think I saw. I was at the handlebar.
Oh, God.
I've never traveled with John before. Yeah, it was actually really good. I did.
So, but it's. Right, yes. I was just now.
There is, there is very, very. My style.
So, so.
It seemed to the top.
But.
Yeah, they got, they just do everything out of those. So.
Eternal.
Convention. So. So here, that's what I said. I'm talking about whatever the next one is. It seems like. They are. It's. Who's this? It's. Smiley. Ten years. By the way. Subscribe. Yeah, this is. And. And. Say. Let's see. Here we go. I pass shit. Can I? Excuse me.
Actually, I'm.
Three minutes, Chair. Eric?
You don't have. You can sit there.
Budget cuts.
You can say it's fine.
Okay.
No, that's fine. You can stay where there's. Sixty twenty. Yeah. That's over there. I'll sit next to Gina. Mike. Or between Mike and some customers. Yeah, that's it. Right.
We're.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right. Okay. Thanks for the consult.
How long is this meeting?
Uh, it'll go till about ten. You have a little. I'm that. Problem. Powdered sugar or something.
I think it's eight o'clock.
Yeah, usually goes about two hours unless we have a, and I don't think he's going to do public comment tonight. So that'll save us an hour.
Thank you. I said six ten, but at six oh nine, I think we have everybody here. One, two, three, four, five. Who am I missing other than Dylan? Morgan, okay. This is not me. That's the Budget Committee. Good evening and welcome to the May seventh, two thousand twenty-five APRC Joint Session with the City Council. Just to clarify that, this is, um, we'll, we'll be alternating hosting these joint sessions, and this one's hosted by the APRC, and I chair the APRC, so I'm the Presiding Officer for this meeting. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Adams. Counselor Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Gardner.
Here.
Counselor Duquesne.
Here.
Commissioner Weiner.
Here.
Mayor Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Bachman.
Here.
Counselor Dale.
Here.
Commissioner Lunt.
Present.
Commissioner, uh, Counselor, um, Kaplan.
Here.
All here, all present.
Thank you. Um, were you missing Counselor Bloom? He's not here.
Oh, thank you.
He left. He had to go. I just want to make a couple of entry remarks before we get into the meat of the agenda. Um, I elected as the Presiding Officer to not have public forum tonight because we've had quite a bit of that over the last few weeks, and we want, I want everybody up here, my eleven colleagues tonight, to focus on the three action, not action, but discussion items here, uh, three, four, and five on the agenda, and not have any other distractions. This is a very critical moment in the budget process. The Budget Committee has met twice. They added a, a, a fourth meeting, is it? Tonight, they will allow them to meet two more times after this meeting, and so we want to stay, uh, laser focused on the big issues in front of us. So I apologize to those that came expecting a public forum. Uh, the Commission will be meeting in a regular business meeting next Wednesday, and we'll have normal rules. It'll be, uh, public forum and people speaking to agenda items.
Public comments are always allowed, um, in writing as well, so that is always a mechanism in the interim.
Thank you. That's a, a nice clarification. We always allow written comment on anything at any time, but particularly once an agenda comes out, we like to see your reaction to it. So we have three operative agenda items. I'm going to read them all, and then I'm going to ask Commissioner Houston to begin in on number three. The first one is Parks and Recreation Service Levels and Budget Challenges Within the City's General Fund. Second, uh, discussion item will be current actions to streamline the city operations and potential longer-term strategies to address general fund challenges. And the last one is near-term funding options for Parks and Recreation's operations and maintenance budget for the fiscal biennium ending six thirty twenty-seven. The reason I want to lay those out is I want to be real sure that, um, we're talking to, when we're having our discussion, we're staying on topic for the item we're on. We don't stray off into another, uh, discussion we're going to get to, so I'm just asking my colleagues up here to help me with that. And that said, uh, Director Houston, please, uh, take us into item number three.
Thank you, Chair. For the record, Rocky Houston, Director, Ashland Parks and Recreation. To, um, set the framework and provide a, a broader background on, uh, the topics tonight, I'm going to call up, uh, City Manager Cotta, uh, to bring, uh, some, some background on the General Fund and revenue challenges. Sabrina?
Thank you, Director Houston. Good evening, APRC Commission and Mayor and Council. So on Monday, there was a study session, and we went over kind of, uh, general challenges in the General Fund. And so I wanted to kind of level set, so we're all on the same, uh, playing field in terms of understanding what's going on in the General Fund, which presents, uh, challenges not only for the Parks budget, but all of our General Fund Departments, and why we have seen, thanks, uh, some reductions in staffing across the board as well as programs. So as you all are probably aware, or hear about Measure Five and Fifty. Oh. You went away. Okay, thank you. Um. These are the biggest issues in terms of how we can collect revenue around property tax. So Measure Five capped property tax, and Measure Fifty, um, property taxes became kind of untied from real market value. And so growth really became capped, and tax rates were permanently set, and what that has, uh, the effect of doing is creating this kind of, uh, ongoing, uh, distance growing between the revenues we take in, um, with the expenditures we need to make in terms of providing services. So, uh, we're not the only ones. I, I know a couple of, uh, counselors, well, the Mayor and Council went to League of Oregon Cities. I believe they heard about this a lot, that many jurisdictions are facing this issue, uh, whereas costs increase, particularly personnel costs, but also materials and services go up. Uh, the amount of revenue we're bringing in through property tax is not keeping pace. And just as a reminder to everyone, uh, the Parks Department is in the General Fund, as is the City Manager's Office, the Police Department, the Fire Department, Finance, IT, Community Development. So it is our kind of big fund that houses a lot of our services, uh, and some of our funds have some elements of cost recovery, but most do not. And none of those are enterprises, so none of them have full cost recovery. And so the General Fund is what allows us to provide the community these services. Excuse me. So Jordan did some analysis for us, and, you know, roughly the equivalent of nine million dollars, uh, is the impact. Uh, nine million dollars we're not collecting. That's the impact of Measures Five and Fifty, which is very similar to kind of the revenue issue we're seeing with the service level that we would like to provide. So that means we roughly have nine million dollars less than we could if we weren't capped to provide services. So over time, the city has adapted to the fact that this revenue is capped by adding other fee types or various revenue types. Uh, you know, we get TLT, uh, there's food and beverage, which is not an operating thing, but I know this comes up a lot for capital. Um, we have ambulance revenue, grants, planning and building fees, parks fees, but none of those, again, are full cost recovery, and none of those are intended to fully fund a department. And you can see kind of across, uh, the timeframe there from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-four. Uh, it's remained relatively flat around property tax and utility bill fees, franchise fees. So, you know, we're having to kind of make up this growing gap through other revenue sources. Oops, I go the wrong way. Apologies. So kind of looking at fees specifically that we have on utility bills, because that is our kind of near-term opportunity to bring in new revenue. Our electric user tax, though we call it a tax, is really a fee. It is a percentage based off electricity, electricity usage. But you can think of it as just a general services fee that's going towards your general services for the city. So it's going to fund police, parks, City Manager's Office. The AFR fee, which is now going to be the wildfire, uh, fee, and the public safety fee are the two additional fees that the city has had online. And you haven't seen a lot of growth in those either because they have remained stagnant until recently. So despite our fee increases, our expenses continue to outpace revenue. And it's not that we are not actively trying to become more streamlined and innovative, and I'm sure Rocky will address more of that later. Um, across the city, we are doing that. The fact is, we are people-heavy in what we do, and people continue to be the biggest expense. And so that is where we will have to continue to balance staffing levels, um, with service delivery and work with the community to determine the best way forward there. So for this biennium, we have added two point two million in new revenue through the public safety fee and wildfire protection fee. We have had five percent strategic reductions in general fund budgets, so those have not been, you know, uniformly five percent. They have been strategic cuts, um, to ensure we're not taking away what is necessary, or, you know, some functions, we have to pay the bills, for example, must continue. We've had staff reductions across, uh, numerous departments, including fire and rescue, police, IT, parks, and court, as well as reduction in services, uh, throughout all departments. So why I brought forward a Parks fee for consideration to City Council a few weeks ago, months ago now, I think, is the thought that, you know, economic development is a priority for the city, and parks is an economic driver. Parks contribute to the high quality of life for residents, and livability is a factor when we think about parks and the health benefits, the environmental benefits, and the social benefits they provide. We have also asked parks to bring on new initiatives and approve new initiatives through land acquisitions such as East Main Park. And we've asked them to open Pioneer Hall and Community Center, which has been offline for five-plus years now and have not been in the budget. And so these are all things that need staffing, um, and budget dollars to go with it. Looking into the future, we are going to consider various tools that we can use to increase general fund, uh, funding. So some of them are a longer timeframe, as I mentioned, and some are a shorter timeframe. So the shorter timeframe one is to create or change a fee, which is what has been a discussion here. There is the potential to create a local option levy. Um, those are typically for five years and have to be renewed. Of course, increasing development is an option. That is an economic driver, but we have little control over that most of the time. Creating a new taxing district, and then, of course, changing the statewide property tax system. Uh, we have little control over the statewide property tax system, though I know there's a lot of advocacy going on to potentially change that. And we will continue to monitor and advocate for that. So I just wanted to provide kind of some baseline context for why the revenue around the General Fund discussion, um, has been so pertinent to, uh, this budget cycle, and why Parks is involved, uh, because, uh, Rocky likes to be my buddy in the General Fund and the Parks Department. Yeah. So, thank you.
Any questions for City Manager Cotta? Commissioner Adams, I'm going to get my title.
On the revenue bar graph, I'm wondering what the, the enterprise, I believe it was called Enterprise Something, Enterprise Admin Services? That was this sudden blue bar on there. I don't know.
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, so it used to be a internal services fund, so there are multiple departments, City Manager's Office, uh, Finance, et cetera, that provide services to the enterprises, and so we charge for those services and do cost recovery. So that cost recovery from the enterprises go into the General Fund as revenue. Uh, and we made a shift, um, between twenty-one and, uh, twenty-two through how we accounted for that, and so it does look different. Yeah.
Counselor Dale.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thanks, Sabrina. I may be jumping the gun. I just wanted to, it, it wanted to ask you before I ask my question, I think it's the other way around. Will you be discussing in a subsequent slide what your direction, and the original direction was to staff relative to the upcoming biennium?
Um, I, I will do that right now.
Perfect.
Are you going to do, I, I might still Rocky's thunder, though.
No, and, and that's okay. I, I, I think this might be more appropriate from you. I think just from specifically, not necessarily what the ask was to Parks, what I'm talking about is asked to every department, and, and when you said X amount of cut, I think it was five percent that you talked about, but, uh, what I'm interested in is the, the, not necessarily the figures, but what basis you were asking staff department has to do that. Was it just expenses? Was it, was it revenue, or you, that, you understand where I'm going. Thanks.
Yeah, I think when we're looking at this budget, you know, there's a lot of economic uncertainty generally around traditional funding sources, grants, et cetera. And so starting November, we had a department head retreat, and prior to that, I sent out a budget memo requesting that department heads, uh, think about unfunded needs and that the budget was going to remain flat. So historically, there's this idea that we get three percent property tax, we can inflate the budget by three percent. That kind of is the department's cola, if you will. Like, things go up, we have to deal with that. So my request was to leave the budgets flat because I was coming to understand that we were going to need to potentially budget in a very conservative way, given uncertainty, and also that we had some personnel costs that were going to come in greater than we had expected in terms of insurance. So that was late fall, as department heads prepared their budgets, um, and we came to the specific budget reviews with departments. That is when further discussions about strategic cuts happened, when it became clear that the revenue projections were not going to be adequate, and we were going to have to reduce.
Follow up, Chair, please. Thank you. So just, just to be clear, it, it, it would be, it would be inaccurate if we were to take a look at, let's say, the adopter, the actual numbers of, uh, twenty-three, twenty-five, and just say, okay, that number minus three percent in the expend, or five, or whatever X was. That's, that's not how that directive was designed or, or, or stated to staff, right? It's.
No.
More complex relative.
It was more complex and more real time. And also, again, we want to be strategic in kind of what we're reducing, and kind of across the board. Okay, this position is vacant, just eliminate it. It's how we lose key positions that become difficult to bring back or lose programs that are difficult. Um, and so it was a, a discussion that was more strategic than just across the board. Um, and so that's kind of on average, departments contributed to that cut, some more than others, depending on their function. And so it was a multi-month process, though, and assessment of, of what we were seeing happen.
Perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner, excuse me, Counselor Duquesne.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I have a quick question. Can we go back to that other slide that had the amounts on there? Um, nope, nope. It was talking about levying and fees and things like that. Nope.
No. No.
Nope.
Going.
I'm just going to go for it. No. No, there was the recent one that just, so it had the different ways that we could increase costs. And that one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So different ways that we can increase cost, and something that I see on here, all of these impact the people in some way, and it would hit our utility bill. So I was thinking, looking at things that are already in place, um, like, um, I think I saw like TLT tax, um, food and beverage. This is something that parks already gets, and to be able to give more of that so that the rate payer does not get hit. Um, so that you mentioned balance earlier, and also looking at, we talked earlier in the previous meeting about, um, land that parks has, that city has, to be able to find that balance so that the rate payers are not hit. So I was, my question is, why isn't that on there instead of everything? I know things go up. We all know that. But why isn't that reflected on there, things that are already put in place?
So I think these are kind of, um, long-term, where the divestment of a single property is kind of a one-time.
F and B and TLT is long-term.
Benefit, and I think as we discussed prior, food and beverage can be discussed by council at a later date, and I think that's something that be, can be considered. Um, TLT, we have constraints by state law on how we expend that, um, so that would have to be, um, considered as well. But the General Fund does, um, benefit from TLT already, and luckily, we're kind of grandfathered in to get the maximum benefit in our General Fund there. Um, so not a lot of, um, movement there. So I think, you know, when we're thinking about kind of systemic changes, um, and kind of large changes to deal with this issue, this is what the options are in terms of increasing revenue. Now, the flip side of that is assessing the programs and the services that we deliver as a city, so not just parks, but fire and rescue, PD, et cetera. So any sort of public-facing service, um, has an impact on internal services, right? The level of service we provide needs a level of support internally. Um, so, you know, as we move forward, we'll continually need to assess that.
Well, and if I may, Chair, piggyback on that. I appreciate that, Sabrina, and as we look at services, and, um, I believe, looking at instead of land acquisition, which I saw on there, to be able to stop buying and purchasing land and look at what we can sell and sell that and begin the ball rolling to, to begin systemic change and financial savings. When you talk about services, I was looking at the slide that was provided earlier, and something that was mentioned, um, before, I was looking at the pool, the ice rink, and the golf course. And it was, it mentions the number of people that come to all three of these different locations.
Counselor Duquesne, I think we're going to get to that in some detail, so I think.
Okay.
We're getting, we're getting ahead of ourselves here.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'll wait for that.
I will note, if you sell park property, there's a state law that dedicates it to only be utilized for other capital expenses. While it does reduce our operating costs moving forward, which is a, a definite goal, it doesn't, I can't spend that on toilet paper or. it doesn't, I can't spend that on toilet paper or employees. So just as a note, I don't know how it is for other city property, but there is for parks. So it's just a nuance that we have to manage as we move forward.
So if we sell Parks property to a private owner, they can't build on that and it becomes a tax base for us, or no?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
What that means is that if I do sell it to a private, or you, not I, I recommend a sell, that those proceeds would be dedicated to capital.
Capital.
That's all. Just one, it's a little caveat that it doesn't then automatically go to operational costs.
It's different for the city. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to go to Counsel Caplan.
No, I was gonna make the same point, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Adams?
There's a part that I'm trying to wrap my head around with this, with this place that we're in financially as a city right now, which is, I don't understand how this happened acutely, if that makes sense. About Measure 5, I was unable to vote against it because I was in high school with Counselor Dale over there.
You weren't even trying.
I see you guys doing the math out there in the audience. Yes, that was a while ago. Measure 50, same way. These aren't surprises, these have been rough realities in our state for many years. The reality, as somebody who's been involved with budgeting for an organization that has 500 benefited employees, the reality of the cost of benefits going up every year is also no surprise, and it's often quite significant. I don't under, what I don't understand is not both of those things, right, which were presented with, or at least one of them in the slides. What I don't understand is how this happened acutely. That it's all of a sudden like, we're way off what we expected, we have to cut positions, we have to cut services. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me, and I'd like to understand it better.
Yeah, I think one area we can do better in the future, and we will, is with our projections. So I think, you know, budget is different from expenditures, right? So we set the budget and then we expend those dollars. And so we kind of monitor the expenditures until the next budget season, right? And so when we're looking at forecasting, you know, traditionally, yes, we see like an 8% increase in healthcare, we don't see an 18% increase in healthcare. And monitoring the revenue that's coming in, in terms of, you know, TLT dollars, et cetera, we've had a decrease in that this biennium, and so we're continuing to project. And quite honestly, I think we over-projected revenue the last biennium. And so, like I said, it's more a combination of several things, in that this has been coming for a while, and we haven't, you know, raised fees, we haven't raised rates, we haven't done anything that continues to fund the general fund. We are fully staffed, and we have a very stable staffing now, which is good and bad, and that staff costs money. And so, you know, part of it is, you know, last biennium, we funded a lot of fire positions, those are expensive. So it's just that everything in the general fund is related. And so it's a waterfall effect of, you know, you kind of bring something on over here that has an effect on the group. And so we will, you know, aim to do better with projections moving forward. But I think, as I've been telling counsel on the Budget Committee, this will not be the last discussion because it's, you know, the balance is budget and this, or, excuse me, the budget is balanced, and now we will never have a gap between revenue and expenditures. The point is, this is a systemic issue. If we are going to provide this level of service, then we need an avenue to provide, to get the revenue we need to provide the service. The flip side is, we do not provide this level of service because it cannot be funded. And so we are trying to thread the needle here and request more revenue to provide this level of service. If that's not acceptable, then we need to reduce the level of service. And so that is just the nature of budgeting. It's accurate for about 20 minutes after you pass it, and then life happens, right? But also, you know, the demand for service is what drives the programs we're trying to fund. But if the community is not willing to fund them, and we're not able to, you know, tap into other revenue sources, then we have to make adjustments.
Thank you. Commissioner Weiner?
I hope this is considered on-topic, but I'm trying to, I've been trying to tease through the limitations on the, on the application of the food and beverage tax allocation to Parks. And my understanding is there's limitations on what it can be applied to and can't be applied to, and it's capital. And I, and I guess I understand that there's some limitations based on that allocation now and what it can be used for, but I, but I wonder where that restriction or limitation came from and what this, you know, this government's opportunity to change that, if that's a vote of the people, or if it's a policy, or what's the flexibility with regards to restructuring the use of those funds so that it can be used to fund some of the, some of the services that went, rather than continued capital expenditures?
I'm gonna try to answer it, but I have a backup here. So food and beverage tax is a vote of the people, and the way the referendum, if that's the right term, went out, it identified clearly for Parks that it could be utilized, as you articulated, that the planning for acquisition of development of capital projects or repair of our existing capital assets. The operational maintenance, there was a couple of years ago, as many in the room and out in TV land know, there was a referendum out to change that to where not only what it could be used for, but the percentage of transfer. So the two elected bodies could work together and move forward to counsel a change in that language and that percentage. It ends in 2030, so in just a couple of years. So I think there's gonna be work that we have to do in the very near term to look at just getting it reestablished. That's not the right word, but continued. And when we do that, it could be phrased a lot of different ways, based off of the policy direction and what I assume are the outcomes or our pros plan for our strategic plan and the citywide strategic plan.
And I will just follow up on the food and beverage revenue. So I think that comes in at about $4 million. You know, Parks budget is.
Per biennium.
Per biennium, yes. Parks budget is, how much per biennium? 14?
Biennium is, yeah, 14.4.
14.4. And so while I think council can have the discussion, and it can go to the people on how we want to utilize and extend the food and beverage, if the thought is the food and beverage will somehow fund the Parks Department, I don't believe that that is a good way forward. The Parks Department will remain a general fund department, though it could definitely bolster operational dollars.
Thank you, Chair. So the title of this item is Park and Recreation's Level of Service. And I want to remind everyone that that's what Rocky and his staff and the commission brought forward to the community is, without funding, here is the level of service that we're gonna be able to provide. We spelled it out. We talked about programs that might not be able to be funded with the current, with the current budget. And, you know, I mean, that's, that's the discussion, is we explained to the community, this is what it's gonna look like. And then, I know it's a future discussion item, but then we came up with, if we can fund the Parks at this level, we can do this. I mean, that's the discussion, I think. You know, it's like we said, here's, here's what we can and can't do with the funding level that is being proposed. Being realistic, I mean, it's not a threat, it's just, this is what we see, this is our decision as to what programs can go forward and what can't. So, I mean, everyone can pick that apart and decide, well, I don't want that one to go away, I want this one to go away. But, you know, that's, that's where we're at.
Yeah, we'll get more, we'll get into that in our third item.
Thank you. Sorry.
There are some options that Rocky's gonna present. Okay. Anybody else? Bob, you're not, your light's on. Okay, I think, thank you. Rocky's gonna continue now.
Part two of Topic One. So, again, slide you probably already saw before, so this is sort of those budget challenges we're facing, is our costs are above what our key revenues are coming in at, which led to a budget direction of 14.397635, which is the budget that is being reviewed by the Citizen Budget Committee. I have one small clarification to the budget direction, which was, hold it flat, no increases on material supplies. However, you can submit change requests. It's for consideration. Now, then we got new forecasts, of course, that made it tougher, and that's where the 15.795 million came from, looking at those additional items. So that's sort of the piecing it all together. But it's all about the history, isn't it? So 116 years of us being here. If you look at, just from 1999, this is only the data that we had available, back in 2000, we were 35.4% of the general fund budget. Today, we're 14.37. That's a steady decrease in general fund utilization. Now, how all the whats are in between there, I don't know, but that's a 59% decrease in utilization of general funds to deliver our services. During that same time, and this is a little busy, I apologize, but our current proposed budget is at the top. We have our, it says adopted, but proposed to be adopted of 14.4 million. Our average cost per FTE for the biennium is 263,000. Now, if you look back in '97, 30 years ago, roughly, our, with inflation, that budget would be 22 million. And our average cost with inflation was 171. So I'm more expensive, my staff are more expensive than we were 30 years ago. And we had more money in today's dollars. 20 years ago, not only did we have a higher budget adopted of 16.34 million, which is equivalent to 25 million in today's dollars, we were only at 202,000. So, again, not only are we a smaller percent, we are, have a 42% reduction in buying power in today's dollars. Now we look at people. People and acreage, right? So going back to 2000, we had 637 acres in our portfolio, and we had 31.9 FTE. You go up to 2008, you see that we capped out at 50.55 FTE. Today, we're at 35. And in the last few years, we have added some additional acreage and developed a couple extra parks to bring it up to 811 acres. So we had a 31% staff reduction from our peak in '08 to today, and a 27 increase in the acreage we're responsible for. So getting to some of those questions about right sizing things, we, we've built a system with a higher level of revenue coming in, a higher level of service, and now we're slowly but surely, just like that extra doughnut every day I eat, you know, it's no problem today, but 30 years later, gosh darn it, what, what? There's an extra Rocky here? And that's the same thing, is there's been steady cuts and reductions and elements that has got us to where we're at. So when we look at our Maintenance Management Plan, MMP, that's just a fancy way to look at, how many tasks do we have to do, how long does it take, and what's that frequency? And when we looked at that assessment of our current system, we identified about 140,000 hours to do routine maintenance. So that's not dealing with a hazard tree, it's not dealing with a storm, that's cleaning restrooms and mowing, just doing the routine stuff. We have about 45, almost 46,000 hours of staff time that are dedicated to doing that work. So that's a third of the staff to do the task. So we're not doing stuff already. It's just the nature of what we're doing. Now, if you add in our contractors, the seasonal hours or volunteer hours for maintenance only, we're getting about half of what we need, which is pretty darn good, considering, but still, there's still a reduction that we have to continue to look at to ensure what we're doing. So when we're looking at, why did operations not get hit as hard? Well, it's been getting reduced over many years, and now we're at the bare bones of things we have to do mandate-wise. And so that's kind of the first step of, for discussion in regards to Part Two. Item number three, which is, we are, have been making adjustments for many, many years as it's gotten us to where we're at today.
So, before we go there, let me read two, the two discussion questions that were suggested by staff. Are there additional ideas? Am I looking at the right one here? Let's see.
Any questions on this historical summary?
Any questions on the historical summary, sir?
Jump ahead. Are there questions on the historical summary? Right. Start here.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Rocky, I appreciate that. So if you could go back a couple of slides to the one with acres, that one. So my question is, and maybe this will tie in and be answered as far as, you know, different ideas and so forth, but do you, it occurs to me, and you're the professional here, I think I know where my lawnmower is, but I don't, it occurs to me that there wouldn't be a linear correlation of people to acreage, like, there are varying types of acreage. Like, I can't imagine that it takes the same amount of FTE for Lithia Park as it does for the median in Siskiyou or something like that. So do you get a little bit more, and maybe it's opposite, or I don't know, you know, but is there, is there a way that you can think about that as far as, I guess I'll call it bang for the buck acreage-wise or something like that? Can you speak to if that is something that is tracked or potentially could be?
So through the MMP, we were able to look at it park by park, and I kept that slide out because it's real granular, and it was hard to look at here. But we, in the MMP, we were able to show by park, and you can average by classification, of course. You know, in other areas I've been in, the undeveloped natural areas usually have the lowest costs. We have a higher cost here because of our fuels reduction, and so that is an additional cost that I haven't had to have other places. But generally, undeveloped properties, natural areas have the lowest cost per acre. A trail has a low cost per mile in regards to it. And as you get, the higher cost ones are going to be developed assets, like a pool, the ice rink, those are gonna have a higher cost per acre or square footage, and sports fields. So because of the mowing schedule's different, the care and feeding to make sure they're ready to use on a daily, weekly basis, and then, and you're right, a Lithia Park is its unique, its own gem in regards to acreage. So a neighborhood park usually costs less than a community park because there are some afforded, I can't think of that right word, where you have more something, so it's cheaper, like lower over, I can't think of the right word, but on bigger properties, because you can, it's easier to mow. There's the right word.
Economies of scale.
Thank you.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Chair. Rocky, could you go back to the beginning of this Part Two of the slide deck? And at the risk of just being nerdy here, that, Forward Two, please. When we look at that overall Parks, you know, relative to the big general budget, seems like there's some major things that have happened at the city between that high number and the low number. And just historically, I'm just wondering, are we capturing that full story? I'm just curious, like, I know we've added ambulance service. I wonder, you know, like, what other things have happened here because that looks so dramatic? Could you give us some more historical context there?
It's a great question. You know, I'm so myopic on just Parks that I didn't really look at the other elements of it in regards to those things, but we have increased fire, you're correct there. You know, and I didn't get this teased out, but I know there, we used to get about 2.7 million from, oh, now I can't think of the name of it. There was an after-school activities, after-school activities levy that was a schools, the school district had, and we received 2.7 million of biennium to provide after-school work. And that went down in about 2006, 2007, but, which would be that middle little drop there potentially. But that wasn't general fund, and that's why we showed here the total budget, not just general fund. As you can see there, that transition, our percentage of the total budget is gone from about 10% down to about four and a half, 5% there. But we were trying to look at a couple of different ways from Parks. And my whole point was, is, you know, I've heard that, you know, we're not doing our part, and I was trying to show that we've, we have historically been a smaller portion of general fund. We have been making reductions in people and in dollars through many years, and I think it's to a point where, like Maslow's hierarchy of needs, you get to a point where it's just food and shelter, and things start to get really tough in regards to what we're doing.
Point well made. You are doing a lot more, or you're doing the same, possibly, with a lot less. So I commend you on that. I also wonder, like... I also wonder, like, again, back to the nerdiness of historical references here, I'd love to, love to know more about what the data is saying here, but thank you.
Counselor Kaplan.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And I think there are other things going on, not just the ambulances, also the reclassification of internal services that yielded that blue block that Justin pointed out. So there's things like that, just accounting treatments, make all kinds of crazy things, make it hard to interpret this sort of thing. I want to go back to that nice MMP Maintenance Management Plan. I was really interested here, Rocky, that you have this now, is this, this is your initiative or is this something that's historically done for our parks?
Yes, we had a twenty twelve, they had a level of service or maintenance standards, for lack of a word, that we had identified, and so we utilized that as the model for doing this. What I did, and I think I wrote it in the brief, is that state parks utilize this tool, it's also the north, I think it's the Northwest Academy has a resource management school where this is still taught as a way to kind of help identify actual costs. And so, for example, when we were looking at North Mountain, I did it on that park first to determine how many FT do I need at its current level versus its full build-out to, again, to continue to ensure that we're making the best decisions we can on our act.
So what I'm understanding is that it is, it's not something that you introduced recently, it's something that has been a tool, there is some historical information as well. So there may be some sense of an ability to, and you said that you do it, that it's available for each park, each facility. I don't know how grand, you mentioned pool as well, although this doesn't quite, all those things. Where my question goes really, is, is this a tool that's intended to help identify changes? Because this is obviously the amount of maintenance requirements that you need on any particular facility, depends upon the design of the facility, that, as you said, if it's, if it's a zero scape, it's going to be a different requirement than if it's a manicured, you know, country garden or something. So is this a tool to kind of identify potential reductions in maintenance hours needed over a certain period of time?
The short answer is yes, and I just want to clarify is there was a maintenance standard, not an MMP, so this level of data in the past. And I just, what I wanted to clarify is that I utilize our historical maintenance standards, not coming in with my own standards in the last ten months when we created this. So just, so this, this is a tool that kind of helps crystal ball, identify how it should be, and then when we implement cardiograph, it allows us, again, to compare our actuals. And so what we will do is we'll set up a lot of routine maintenance as prescribed, and so it'll have a deadline, and we'll be able to see what we're not doing, and making sure, are we not doing the right things? Making sure that the priorities are being met, and look quarterly, monthly, however, whatever the level is, and where we are spending our hours, and try to continue to shape and reduce that. But this, this is a tool that we're looking at to help us forecast if we reduce irrigation, what's that impact on mowing going to be for us over the next month on these parks? And so it is a tool to kind of help us forecast that to get us where we are within our resources.
Where you, where we want to be, or where we can be, where we can arrive.
And just like the budget, once you adopt it, we're in a dynamic program. Parks is always dynamic, every day there's something fun and exciting that comes in that throws you off schedule for routine stuff, and so it's continued to allow us to see where those unplanned things are, and hopefully forecast FTE for that as well.
Nevertheless, the message that I'm taking from this conversation is that this, you have introduced this tool, you've, you know, you've added some information from previously available information thirteen years ago, but this is a tool that you've implemented that really is something in your toolbox to be able to be a little bit more fine-tuned about trying to really contain costs going future, with some specific choices that the parks commission and you could make about how our facilities look.
And I will add, we don't have a tool, and we haven't found one that is for senior services or rec programs. We've been looking, as part of our pros plan, that's our goal, is to hire someone to do the quantitative analysis, or do it ourselves if we can't find a vendor to do that, to, again, provide some gauges of, we have X number of people, this is what level of hours of programming we should have as well, to, again, help that level of service model to where it's not a feelings, but we kind of have a grade that we're looking at.
I kind of think of it as somewhat, not a perfect analogy, but somewhat analogous to what in the council we are discussing with our city manager, the facilities master plan, where you're looking at, doing a really hard look at each one of our city facilities and saying, well, you know, what's the best use, and what's the, what are ways to make sure that we're maintaining them properly and can save money and resources in the future.
Yeah, I'm going to summarize what I think I heard, which is basically Director Houston has brought us a management information system that's been developed by the state.
It's, it's used by the state.
It's used by the state, okay.
An industry standard.
So our management will have data-driven decision-making tool, and what we do with it is, you know, we'll see, it'll help. Mayor Graham.
That was my question.
Okay. Counselor Kay.
Thank you. Staying on this graph right here and looking at volunteers and volunteer hours, I had the great opportunity to be invited to Hunter Park, and I got a chance to meet with the moms and the coaches and the parents who are out there making it happen for our youth. And I saw that, and of course, my experience in Ashland, volunteerism is huge. And I don't, something that was mentioned before, prior to this meeting, we've had so many lately, but what was mentioned before is that parks takes care of vandalism and things like that at the park. And when I was there on Saturday, I saw the graffiti had been removed, and parents talked about paraphernalia that had been removed, and just seeing the things that they do, how they take care of the diamonds and building the batting cage, and just all of the things that parents do, running the snack bar, all of these volunteers. I look at this dollar amount, and I think it's huge, the volunteerism and the positive impact that it has on parks. Do you have any idea how many parents volunteer at the different parks to keep our children engaged?
I'm going to look to Deputy Director Diles, and I, to be frank, I believe our Little League volunteers isn't included in these hours, because they're, they're not in our standard volunteer program, but.
I don't want to go to that level of detail.
Yeah, but I don't know, I know we have, whether it's, whether it's Justin picking up a wrapper, or Rick pulling a limb off the trail, we have all kinds of volunteerism that's helping improve our parks just haphazardly as just being a person, and more organized as it is with organized sports. And I know there's hundreds and thousands of hours that go into coaching and all that other work that is supporting, and all that frankly does keep the fees that we charge lower than they may have to be.
We have a tremendous volunteer force across the parks, and they do a lot of work out there. Any other questions on the historical story that got us to this point? Okay, let's go on to the.
So on item four, current actions to streamline the city operations and potentially longer-term strategies to address general fund challenges. Sorry, that's a mouthful. What are we doing to try to make things better? There's my summary. To streamline our operations. So operationally, we're assessing cost savings, we're looking at all the things we're doing and trying to figure out what's the minimum, what is the standard? So if we're currently mowing a whole field, but per ordinance, we only have to do thirty feet, should we consider that change to reduce our operational, to get on to something else with what we have? We're assessing our capabilities, so we're looking at what can we accomplish within those elements, again, to help prioritize the things that we aren't doing. We're looking at reducing irrigation, and will that save us a hundred thousand dollars? And that will help offset additional temporary employees or recreation programs, so we're trying to look through those things. I think in my previous meeting, I'd referenced, so far this year, we've already used a million gallons at North Mountain Park to irrigate those fields. We, I believe I was told, we typically use sixteen to eighteen million gallons for a whole season. Luckily, we use TID for a good portion, and that just got turned on this week, so those gallons usage can now switch to non-city water, to irrigation water. But depending upon the year, that, that changes. We're looking at, in recreation, evaluating our cost per service and session, so if we have to live with fourteen point four millions, and as we move forward, what, what is the state mandated minimum for safety, for lifeguards, for, what's the minimum number we need to have at the ice rink, et cetera, so that, again, we can look at the level that we are serving and a level service to expand some programming as we need. We're looking at the seniors program, is looking at assessing rehousing, some of the senior program at the Grove, again, to provide more days of service and to improve our customer service for the whole department there. That way, if we have recreation staff and senior staff there, more hands to help answer questions, and currently, we don't have a fully one-hundred percent booked Grove for all those buildings, so it allows us to duplicate that. Then use the current building like we would the community center or other buildings, where when we have something going on, we open it up and utilize it. Now, of course, RV COGS, they're five days a week as well, so it's already going to be operating five days a week for that service. And we're reviewing programming to look at what are very high costs in employees?
I just want to point out that RV COG service is food and friends.
Thank you.
Who are feeding seniors who are vulnerable and need food.
Thank you for that clarification. So yes, they serve about two thousand residents daily through that program, and it's partially federally funded, and I think the city has a, or had a grant to help support that as well in the past. Getting into the weeds, we're reviewing programs to identify what are under low headcount programs and/or programs that take a lot of staff time to facilitate versus those that we have many more. Again, looking at that valuation, how can we, with the limited staff time we have, how do we keep as many programs open as possible? In our structure, of course, we're in the middle of a class and compensation study, which I believe on the twentieth, we'll get, start to get some resolution on that, but as we understand what the new classifications and studies for our current staff are, we can assess where staff are located, the work they're doing, and what the community needs are. And again, our pros plan will continue to help us, our next survey will be going out as looking at community values, which is, so then, once we understand what people are willing to pay for, and what those priorities are, what our capabilities are, and try to align those the best we can. You know, in our boulevards program, we're looking at hardscaping some of those areas, again, to reduce not only the use of herbicides, but also reduce the mowing and those other man-hours to put those limited hours other places. We're using a model I coin as naturescaping, so again, looking at doing less and having things look a little bit more natural, again, to try to minimize our operational costs. We're even looking at going on a trash can diet and a mutt mitts diet, so that if we have fewer cans, there's fewer tons of garbage that we have to pay to have brought out. Now, it's always a balance to ensure that we don't have littering and those things, but I've been in several programs where we've done that, and it's amazing how conscientious most users are where that garbage doesn't drop on the ground. And, and we're, I guess lastly, is looking at our fleet system and identifying what do we really need? What can we rent? What can we borrow? So again, as we're replacing stuff, there's some things we're not going to be replacing to, again, have a smaller, more focused nimble fleet system and future work. So Sabrina talked about a few of these earlier, but revenue type, you know, we got taxes of goods and services, so food and beverage is one we have, we don't have a general sales tax, we don't have a fuel tax, which would be not for parks, it would be for transportation-only. TLT is one that we have, and there's even a construction tax that I've seen out there. Taxes on income, you know, there's nothing at the city level for personal income, business income or payroll taxes. Taxes on property, we don't have a levy, we don't have a special district, I don't believe we have a, at least not a parks bond right now, but those are, again, tools. Each one of these is focused on what it can be spent for, each one of them has a different potential impact, of course, for our, our community members. Fees and charges, so we have franchise fees, we referenced earlier municipal service fees, fee for services, which we utilize in parks, system development charges, of course, we have that as well. And then there's, there's fines, you know, sometimes there's fix-it tickets, I've seen in communities where you go through restitution process and those funds remain at the department instead of going through the court system. I know Lane County has it, where if you buy an annual pass and pay a small fee, then you don't, your parking ticket doesn't move forward, and so then that money stays in the department, and then there's a, if you have an annual pass, then you don't have an opportunity of getting a parking ticket in the future. Events, we do events, you know, for sponsorship and partnerships, naming rights, so it could be Rocky Houston's Lithia Park, brought to you by Justin Adams, you know. You know, services that partnerships could do, private-public partnerships, whether that's having a commercial entity somewhere, I guess we could look at, I guess we kind of have that private-public partnership with the Shakespeare Festival. It's on park property, city property, and that is, I guess it's technically a nonprofit, but still a partnership there. So all of these don't happen today, don't happen tomorrow, this is a lot of work and to figure out which way one of those things go. Things that we are working on conceptually is, I think there was an early reference earlier about the citywide facilities plan, parking fees in the park and downtown, again, there's always unintended consequences with everything. Golf course business plan, again, to determine, is that the, are we the right, can we make it work, whatever that means. Park fee review, we continue to do that, and we should be doing that every year, looking at those user fees. Some would say that's the fairest form of taxation, because if you don't use a facility, you don't have to pay a fee. However, it is a right-now gotcha cost, and it usually is higher than a generalized fee across the whole constituents. Partnerships, again, food and beverage tax, we talked, I think, a few earlier about that needs to go back out, and what does it look like when it goes back out? Transient lodging tax, Medford raised theirs by a percentage, I think, around COVID time, and they're generating millions more. Of course, they got a lot more hotels than they used to as well, so, but historically, we, we had more transient lodging tax in Ashland than Medford, it was really close. And then since COVID, that number's changed, and there's a lot of factors that go into that, but still, I know, but that's people coming here and staying in our hotels and Airbnbs and such that pay that. And then a levy or district, which again is a, levies are great and make you accountable because they have to be renewed every five years, but there's a risk every five years that that potential funding stream goes away. And a district is a whole other form of government and process that takes a lot of consideration. So with that, any discussion on those?
Would you just go back to that slide? I just want to read the blue words there. The city strategic plan, APRD strategic plan, many discussions are ahead of us as we review the potential options. So the reason I'm saying that is we are going to have a discussion now, and I know Counselor Kaplan has a question about one of your slides. We're going to bring this to the point of its current budget here very soon, so I don't want to spend too much time brainstorming new and great ideas, because we're going to come back to that probably after July first. We're planning another joint session, and that would be a great topic for that session. So this, this is all good background. The first item was history, this is what we've been doing lately to try to adjust to the history, and then we're going to go on to our third item here in a minute, but Counselor Kaplan had a question about ten minutes ago.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Rocky. Could you back up just a couple of slides? There it is, right there. Because this slide you call current actions versus the subsequent two slides are future Because this slide you call current actions versus the subsequent two slides are future things. So it seems to me that these, I mean, I think some of these I think you're doing now, but it's not like they're done. It's like the this, there's a, there's a timeframe for actually completing and getting some results from this. Could you give me a sense of, you know, on this, on this slide, what's a reasonable ramp of, you know, doing this work, doing these assessments, doing these evaluating, doing this reviewing and getting to some conclusions that will start to yield some savings? Is that what we're talking about? Are we talking about a month? Are we talking about six months? Are we talking about a year?
That's a great, great question. And like any, any good person, it depends. So I I think some, some of these we've got in motion, and we could start implementing them within the next month to two. So whether that's reducing the number of trashcans, changing our irrigation, some of those things, looking at that, those operational things. We're trying, we're working, hate saying try, we're working to then see if we can commit to some things. So if we only have 14.4, can we commit to eight weeks of swim lessons? And then assess at the end of the season, our revenue, our cost savings, to determine the next season, whether we can commit or or we have to change what that level of service is. And so I think that's the way we're looking at it. And then by the end of the year, this calendar year, we're hoping that we'll have our PROS plan completed, and that will really set the the deck fairly well in regards to what the feedback the community is giving us, what our action plans are going to be, some of those objectives, goals. And and hopefully create a framework to where if in 24 months, we're here looking at trying to cut another million dollars from the parks budget, we we've already got a lot of background to help inform that tough decision. Thanks.
Mayor Graham.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Rocky. It strikes me that this is a very similar conversation to what we're having at the council, because as Sabrina noted, Parks and Recreation sits within the general fund, and these same pressures are acting on the entirety of the general fund. And so we're having a lot of conversations about what do what do we pick up after we get through this budget process that helps us investigate different options, both for streamlining our our work and also for new funding and new revenue sources. So I know we don't want to take a lot of time to brainstorm those ideas here. But it's interesting to me, and I just wanted to point out that the council is having very similar conversations. Some of the things that are on your graphics are the same kinds of things that the council will be looking at. So I think that that's just a a general state. And when I talk to folks around this, the state from other communities, that's what they're doing too, because these same forces are acting on them in the same way they are acting on ours. The one question I had is that in the packet, it identifies specific concepts to date of of future action. And I know folks have come to the council and talked about the ability to handle certain of these elements that right now are not being handled entirely by volunteers, but they there are volunteers that are are willing to step into those spaces. Is that one of the things also that you'll be looking at in the post-budget time period?
Yes, I I think we're looking at it a couple of different ways. One is with our our current structure, is there a way that we can, as we restructure, to handle or manage more volunteers or find a way to have them self-caring and feeding? You know, it's like having a a pet dispenser that kind of does itself for you to where you can go away for a couple of days, if you have a cat, right? Not a dog. But but so, yeah, then I think I've, I think I've stated in other meetings, but I'll just reframe is that like, can we have a trail boss? So in the trail world, there's a lot of times where there'll be a volunteer that's responsible for a trail, and they kind of are set a schedule and coordinate. They're trained up and can then provide basic training on what they're doing that day. The same sort of models, can we have volunteer bosses that are self-sufficient? There's, there's a cart, there's the tools, here's a list of tasks. And now they, we can have it more organized where we have more days available for whether it's raking leaves in the fall, picking weeds in the spring, you know, whatever those things are that are going to allow our paid staff to do other things and and get a little bit more done. And so I think those are the things we're trying to to look at. And, you know, it takes time to manage volunteers. And that's the other thing we're trying to to balance that out. We don't want to say that, we we know we can't manage the system with volunteers, but they definitely, as you see in our our slide earlier, is they they definitely are a great door jam to make sure the door doesn't close, so.
And there, I have to say, there are some, some things that are being done almost entirely by volunteers. The Ashland Wildlands Trail Association, for example, is almost single-handedly maintaining the trails without much oversight or handholding from from the Parks Department. Of course, it's always in coordination, and there's certain things that are done. The same thing, I think, would be said at the community gardens. There and both at Ashland Creek and also down at the Nature Center, there's beautiful pollinator herb gardens down there that really have been maintained by volunteers pretty much by themselves for for years.
And for example, at the Nature Center with those demonstration gardens, if we didn't have the volunteers, they probably would disappear.
They would, for sure.
Because we don't have that that care and feeding capacity. You know, for our community gardens, I think we we've been looking at, before we started the budget process, trying to figure out, is there a partnership or another way again, to reduce the limited bandwidth we have for them? You know, and I, looking and talking historically, you know, we have well-intentioned adults, and sometimes they get along, and sometimes they don't. And sometimes that's our role to to manage that. And and that's someone, I think, why our staff in our contracts are the way they are now. But again, as we move forward, it's a great service and is how do we, how do we reduce our staff time or dollars and cents to continue that? And I think that's a, an ongoing discussion we'll have on a lot of, a lot of things we're doing.
I just want to quickly add RV MBA and DVO to the list of people.
Sure, sorry, sorry.
Maintaining our trails. AWTA is awesome as well.
Yeah, sorry.
Counselor Duquesne.
Here's to the volunteers. We love our volunteers. Thank you, Chair. So I was just looking at streamlining and a question that I saw that came to my attention in the packet is looking at, it says programs, and it has number of people served, how it's utilized and the impact to parks. So pool has 10,000 people, ice rink has 20,000, and the golf course has 30. And looking at this.
Counselor Duquesne, that's the next, that's the next section. So he needs to make his presentation, and then we'll ask questions about it.
All right, I'll wait.
It's a beautiful graphic. I want to thank Brandon Terry for that one.
Question about the second item? Okay, let's go on to the third one and then.
Near-term funding options. This one's going to take two minutes, right? All right, so the tough question is, is why? How did we decide what we, what we decided? And what was the process that we we utilized to go through that? Sorry, I just made sure I wasn't missing something. That was a question. So the objectives that we've, we've, we worked off of is we have a target that we have to hit. So we have to, we have to reduce X dollars. So that was our first thing is regardless, we have to hit that bottom line. We wanted to minimize our impacts to park users. So how do we, how do we do that? We wanted to make sure we're meeting our mandates, that our ordinances, state laws. We want to prioritize keeping low-barrier assets and programs open. So again, making sure that the, what we have open and available is the the easiest to access. And so in a nutshell, we have an inverted sort of scale of what, what do we have a lot of users in and a low cost is is the sweet spot, of course. But that varies, kind of looking at that. We, we looked at that as well as then we looked at, okay, first in, first, last in, first out sort of a model. So what we looked at is when we presented our budget of 17.95, not 17, 15.95, 795, too many numbers, sorry. We, we looked at what was, what were those things that we added above our baseline budget? And those were the first things that we were looking to reduce first, which is opening those two new assets. I know they're older assets, but they've not been, they're not in our budget today. We wanted, we wanted to add that position to the senior service, and we wanted to continue to try to make sure we maintain that first. So we kind of put that on the side. And so those were the first cuts we did. So we added stuff, we re, we removed that first. Then that wasn't enough money. So then we had to go in looking at, within our current operations budget, program budgets that didn't impact programs directly, how do we cut? What do we cut there? So we cut professional services, which is primarily our seasonal employees, our hazard tree contracts. We we remove those things. When we removed the senior, not senior, senior, the Pioneer Hall and the Community Center, we had taken fund for seasonal employees to where we weren't asking for the full cost of a position for rec coordinator. And so when that position went away, so did those funds that were helping support the rink and the pool. And so that's why those initial reductions in the rink and the pool were being proposed, because the revenue we had or funding we had to support those wasn't there any longer. So as such, we had to reduce our level of service there. Again, that still didn't hit our target number of 1.4 million. So we, we developed a simple rubric with the data that we had, which was, what's the general fund need? So revenue, expenses minus revenue. What are the number of people utilized per year? And just on a high, medium, low sort of level, what's the park operational impact? And that is how, how, how many hours, how difficult is it for staff to do that? So as you look here, the pool is $100,000 to $200,000 in support from general fund needed. It serves about 10,000 users a season, and it has a high operational. So when the pool's open, we have to be there several times a day to monitor the chemicals, change the chemicals. We have to do all the housekeeping inside the building. So all those things take six to eight hours of FT every day it's open. Ice rink, golf, environmental education, seniors, and it's sort of that same thing of looking at, at a very high level. We don't collect our data to where I can tell you, I use 800 hours at the pool or a million dollars in operational costs. And what we tried to do is look at all these programs through the same lens, is what's the cost for providing that recreational service? So the pools, the lifeguards, it's the, it's the people to be there to to have it, not the actual roofing and repairs of the pool.
A quick one here. First, we will have, going forward, a way to collect that data. So that's one of the.
Right.
Management information system improvements. Quick question to clarify the chart.
You may have just answered, I don't know, I was looking down at my notes. Just so I'm going to ask the question again, I'm sorry if it's duplicate. Unique number of folks served or just number of, let's just say, tickets sold, I guess, for lack of a better term?
It's more of a ticket sold. We, we don't have a way of identifying.
Right, so it could be five golfers that played that many rounds, six, I'm just.
Right.
Or whatever, or same with the pool or whatever, okay.
And it could be 20,000 different seniors at the senior center or 200 that go 1,000 times.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Counselor Duquesne, did you have a question specific to this chart?
Yes, I did, I did. I was looking at the numbers, and when you look at the numbers, and it kind of goes back to this that was presented in front of council, some of the things that would be deleted, some of the services. And when you look at pool, ice rink, and the golf course, and the number of people that are being served, and you mentioned it, Rocky, the pool is seasonal, and the number of people who are served. The ice rink is very seasonal in the number of people that serve. The golf course is year-round and the number of people that are served. And it bring, it begs the question, when I go back to the survey and what the the community did with the dot matrix, twice it came back golf course. If anything goes, the golf course goes. And it seems that there is no question about it. It stays, we're going to East Main Park acquisition. And I just don't see how this is benefiting the people.
So I I could invert it the other way, is I have an asset that's open 365 days a year. If I close the golf course, does all of its operational costs go away? No, I still have to operate 70 acres and maintain that acreage and still have an operational cost. And so when, when I was looking at the impact to general fund, and there's more revenue that comes in there, and it is serving more people from the rubric that we're looking at, that's, that's why it was identified. It's still being impacted. We're, we're not doing the grill. We're looking at an alternative way for that. So every program was reduced and our, if we only have 14.4 million, we're trying to figure out what, what can we do in swimming? What can we have with the ice rink? Is it only open from key holiday to key holiday instead of three, three months? So my rubric didn't include that data that you you have. And and that is a deficiency in the data I have, as well as, as I've stated in to council and to the commission is, if I have a policy direction to change the, the budget direction, those priorities, then I will follow the policy direction.
Well, I am going from what the community gave us twice. And also, before the last biennium, Rachel came in front of us and told us there was an RFP out for, for the sale of the golf course.
Yeah, I'm going to, once again, cut this off, because this, this is an APRC matter, not a council matter.
And I'll bring it up at another time. Thank you.
So but but to that point, you had mentioned the strategic planning process that you're engaged in. And I think all of the, a lot of these questions, right, around what does the, the whole of the community prioritize, that's information that this body, both of our bodies, we don't have that right now. So we have to make budget decisions based on the information we have, what's in play right now. But understanding that we're, that you all, with the commission, you all are going to have much more fine-tuned understanding of what the community is most interested in and prioritizes. But we have to have some time to get through that process. Is that, do I understand that correctly? Thank you.
Great, Sabrina. So that's, this is why the environmental education was the first program.
Commissioner Warner, you want to talk about this?
Sorry.
I do.
Okay, please.
I just, I'm, as I'm, I'm looking at these numbers, I'm seeing environmental ad and senior services 500,000, whereas pool, ice rink, golf, only, only 100, 100,000. I'm trying to, trying to understand where those cost differences, like what's the, what's?
So for the environmental education programming, for the most part, we don't have a lot of fees associated with the services they provide, and they don't generate very much revenue. I think $12,000 this biennium is what our projection is. Versus the ice rink, I think our cost was 200,000, our revenue was 100,000 for the season. Does that sound right? So we, our revenue is, so we have a fee to do that. And so environmental education, I'll be the first, and I think I've said this a few times, is that 5,000 is an estimate based off of, because we don't have ticket sales like we do for the ice rink or pool. And that was an estimate based off of the salmon festival and the other program we have. And and if we were looking at who gets used the most, I know that our ADT, our average daily travel on Windburn Way is 1,120 vehicles. If you times that by 365, that's half a million cars. If you assume 2.5 people per car, you've got about 1.5 million users of Lithia Park by vehicle. 2 million, if you think you've got a half million people just walk in. So that's why, you know, our low-barrier assets like Lithia Park are the ones that we're making, trying to focus on keeping open.
Just trying to understand, so you're saying that the, that the $500,000 cost is because it's, it's the, the cost to do the thing, but it's not offset by any revenues?
Yes.
And that's why that one was, okay, thanks.
And just like with the senior center, it, it, it has a $671,000, I believe, budget, and it brings in $90,000 in revenue, but we give 90% of that away. So it's only about 18,000 in actual revenue that comes to us after it, so.
Counselor Dale.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Rocky. So it occurs to me, and I, I think, at least I know council, when you come and present, has a way of spoiling the punchline with some of your future slides. So I may be doing that right now. But I understand, I just want to make sure I'm clear what I'm looking at. So the, these decisions were made just kind of on, we'll say, first order effects based on the direction that you were given. But I, I would assume, I would hope, I think, that. I would assume, I would hope, I think, that as part of your pros strategy that you're going through, one of the things I think, I think both bodies and I think the community would be very interested in is, is seeing the second order effects of these. Like, okay, so that, here's your numbers here, but, but this program might have a higher cost, but it has a second order positive effect relative to economic development to other, other facets of the city, whether it be downtown, restaurants, other things, so forth, travel. That, that will be included in your strategy. Is that correct? So, because it's obviously not here.
We'll be working with the deputy city manager on making that economic element.
But that'll be part of your, yeah, thanks.
All right. I'm going to move to the last item, which is the one everyone's been wanting to talk about, right? Or is it the same one? All right. This is the same slide. I'm like on item five. So I want to update some numbers. So when I was here on April 15th, we presented some numbers. We've got updates on those. And so I just want to clarify. So park fee revenue, I presented for $5 for 18 months was $750,000. That was the number I was provided and I worked off of it, not doing any math, don't know how many duly wicks that we have in the city, et cetera. However, after the 15th, we had that number revisited with finance and $5 for 18 months generates 1.125 million. So park budget with park fee, we said was 15.2 million, that $5. That number today, based off of, there was, I think, a staff person or two that were showing in one column, not in the other. And so it's 15.5. So if we get $5, if there was that, the benefit is 15.5 million versus 15.2. And the park budget without the fee, I had represented 14.45. What you see in the budget document is 14.397635. So I just want to clarify, as I get more, more better, using the proper English there, data, I want to make sure it's clear to everyone that it is. So with that new assessment at $5 for 18 months, the five, six, and seven is here showing what that would be. And so that's why I believe that the $6.50 was identified by the park commission because that is equivalent to the, the $9 that was referenced earlier, or that 15.8 million dollar to do all the things that we had said we would be able to do. So we have three options to, to review. That was in the packet. So option one is what we have today. So in the budget hearing, it was 14.4 million, which is a reduction over 1.4 million, which was proposed by the park commission. The impacts would be a layoff of two staff, the elimination of the environmental education or nature center program. We would have reductions in recreation programming for the pool and ice rink. The community center and ice and Pioneer Hall would not open. We would have some reductions in park operations that could impact restrooms and the maintenance levels of our parks. East Main Park would not be developed. And the senior services would be reduced because we'd only have that two FTE to manage that. Again, earlier I referenced the ways that we were trying to lessen the impact of all those reductions as, as we move forward, if we're at 14.4. If we have a $5 park utility fee, that would generate over 18 months, 1.125 million is the estimate today from, it's never set in stone until it all is finalized. That would provide 15.5 million. We'd still have a reduction of what was proposed of about $275,000, which primarily would be impacting the, some recreation programming reductions. And primarily it would be that community center and Pioneer Hall not opening. There'd be some additional reductions we'd have to do. The last one is $6.50 is what the park commission was recommending, which is in alignment with roughly bringing in that $1.4 million of revenue over 18 months. And then we would be managing the program as we propose. It would allow community center and Pioneer Hall to be open. We would be able to develop East Main Park and have that support for operating it. And that would be, we would fall basically the budget direction that was provided with the inclusion of those new responsibilities. So in summary, these are the, probably hard to read, but the, the three sort of all lined up. And with that, I'll open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. So I appreciate that, Rocky. I'm, I'm still a little bit, maybe you can provide some clarity on, I understand that. I understand that, you know, how, whatever you came to and the commission relative to the policy decisions there is, is what it is. What, what I, what I would like to, I personally, just from a council standpoint, would like to kind of get more clarity and, and insight on is it still to me kind of feels like, okay, if there's X amount of fee, or whatever it is, or let's, let's just say 650, it feels very business as usual, I guess I would say. I don't, and maybe, maybe the answer is that we can't have an informed decision until you're done with your pros strategy and you are, and you've talked to the community that you, you, the community has gotten together, you've had your meetings, and then we can say what do, as, as the city manager spoke to earlier in the budget meeting and has at council, what is the level of service that this community is expecting to be provided and so forth? And so what I'm curious to hear is, is I, doesn't sound like we're ready to be able to have that informed discussion until you're done doing what you need to do. And I understand that. And there's just kind of a crossover here, right? We're just kind of, it's, it's a little bit backwards. It's no fault of anybody. It's just the way that things fell and what happened, right? So my question to you would be something along the lines of what would you need in order to be able to handle certain services, to be able to, we'll say, continue until we get to a point that we can have that decision? Because what I worry about, I think, at least for me, from a council standpoint, is, okay, we go with this and it's for the foreseeable future, and maybe those discussions are delayed or, and you can understand, just this is an oversight. This is an oversight question. It's not a calling into question, you or the department or management or anything else like that. This is just our responsibility as council is different from the commission, I would say. So can you speak to how that, how you think that that would look relative to what we can expect from a strategic discussion, what we can expect from oversight, so forth like that? How you see that playing out in the next, say, 12, 18, 24 months?
Tough question.
I know.
Good. So I, I believe the, the first phase is, is completing our public engagement and, and completing our pros plan. And then that will provide a roadmap. Now, once we have that and we start implementing it in our strategic realignment, maybe we're not the right size. I know if we look to do any reduction, we will have community members that are going to be communicating to all of you of how, how wrong that is and how impactful it is. So that's a dust statement is that's going to be, no matter what reductions we have, any change is going to be very difficult for any of us. So I, I hope that we have, as we're completing and not completed our pros plan, we're, we're having these discussions that are informing our pros plan and informing those future long-term solutions. You guys will be working on the, the facilities plan and, and some of those, which will impact parks as well. And so those will all be waves in that sort of decision-making as we move forward to a solution. What that solution is, I think I would have to come back to you all to determine what that schedule is. I know that there's schedules for, you know, someone went out to vote. There's a process, of course. There, there's other things. So it almost comes to a, a point where we get to a decision staff-wise to go to the park commission and engage with the counselors as well in regards to the forks in the road. And then, once we get to those forks in the road, then we would support it going those ways.
And so the, just, just, I wrote down, I think you said this earlier, but I just want to make sure, you're, you're, you are intending to have your pros plan complete by end of this year? Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have Rick's commitment that his review will be sufficient for that. I tease.
And I'll summarize what I think I heard, which is, we are not trying to, to go, we're not pretending business as usual for any length of time. In other words, we saw the historical background. We saw what's happening to the general fund. We can't keep putting Band-Aids on like these fees. So I, I think maybe what I heard from Counselor Dale was maybe, when do we transition beyond just coming up with these short-term fixes to a larger strategic, you know, start to engage with some of the ideas that city manager brought up, that are on some of your slides, all those other revenue enhancement ideas? We will continue to look for efficiencies always. That's just good management. But we're pretty down to the bone as a city. I mean, and particularly our department. So we have to find other ways to finance to meet the demand of the services that we're getting as parks.
And, and if there isn't support for revenues, then we have to be honest and, and look at those reductions.
We can't pretend, you know, we don't want to go down from 33% to 20% of what we're supposed to be doing. We have to be transparent with everybody that there are real consequences for the decisions we're making. And I guess the question is the timeframe.
Yeah.
The timeframe is how quickly can we transition from, say, this fee to maybe a longer term solution where the fee wasn't even necessary? And I know you can't answer that, but that's the bigger question.
And if I was going to put my crystal ball out today, I think it's, it's two to five years, just depending upon what, what the, the solutions is and what dialogue. Because you know what happens is we get to a point and then it creates more questions and, and something happens. And so there's, there's little delays in that process. And I, and part of that's, I think, looking to the city manager all the way around is what, what your timeline is for, for that, given what, what we know today.
Mayor Graham.
Thank you, Rocky. This question is in the same vein of, we have a list here. You've provided a list of the various things that you're already looking at. And so if, I think, following on behind Counselor Dale's question, if the pros plan is done at the end of this year, which would be six months into this biennium, can we expect that not only would the answers be back in terms of some of these other ideas, which I think can be explored concurrently to the pros plan, would those answers be back, married, if you will, to the priorities of the community in a way that when we come back around to this budget process in two more years, we're having a fundamentally different conversation? Is that, does that, is that fair to say that, that even though maybe not everything is fully implemented, we would be able to have a plan that says, here are the things that parks is going to offer. Here are the various revenue streams that are either coming into play or are, you know, we think are viable and we're going to keep working towards? Would, would we be able to be to that point in, you know, by the time we're having these budget conversations again?
I hope so. And I, and I apologize for not being 100%. Oh, yes, we're going to do it. Because I know I, I'll have to work with the park commission and go through that process and, and bring that forward. So it's, that would be the plan we'll be working on. And I just don't know what, what would get in our way. And part of that may be just how many of those avenues we're looking at, what other resources we need to investigate those things. And there's a lot of those elements that, that's not my, my bandwidth. So I don't know levy 101 to the level that we, we need. And so, you know, I'd be looking to the city manager, their office, again, to help and legal to provide us some, some direction and guidance in regards to what, what tools do we need? But we, what we know is we know what's on our belts and the tools that we think we need to then move forward. And to your point, we'd have some direction of where we think we should go and be able to have some of the, that menu to, to look at.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Chair. And, and I look to city manager, as well as you, Rocky, mayor, others around the dais here. It's always more efficient to take some time to sharpen the axe, you know, to get the job done better. You know, that those sayings, spend a dime to, to make a dollar. When we're done, when you're done with the pros plan and we open up into strategic planning, two questions. A, do we have funding allocated for consultants to, to study and, and help bring some new innovative ideas to the table? And, and if so, what does that, what does that look like in city governance? And we're here at the parks study session. So the parks management, what type of opportunities are there to bring in some, some rock stars to, to help us? Is there, is there anything that, that we can see looking around? You said pros plan's going to be done at the end of this year. So yeah, do we have money budgeted for this? And what does that, what does that look like for us? What kind of opportunities do we have to bring into Ashland to help?
That's a great question. And what do you think, Sabrina? Sorry. So I'll just say for our parks budget, we don't, we don't have a line on them right now, specifically for phase two of implementation. That being said, you know, it, it wouldn't take much for us to look at that and add that to our, our capital plan and, and look at that, given our current resources. Again, it just depends upon cost overruns on East Main Park, if we get to do that, the tennis court, you know, again, in regards to what our limitation currently is for our CIP.
So in terms of the city's broader strategic plan, there is funding in my budget request for that in the city manager's office for consultants to come in and help us with the strategic plan. And that's kind of the first, the first step. And, you know, I think that plan will be looking at, you know, revenue, you know, facilities optimization, all of that, because that is all of what we're funding with community resources. And in terms of innovation, in terms of bringing in more revenue, you know, there are kind of limitations there in terms of revenue opportunities that are beyond kind of what staff is recommending and what falls within like the legal realm of what jurisdictions can do. I think there is probably some innovative steps. And Rocky and I have talked about opportunities for partnering on things that we can continue to pursue. But I think, you know, once we have that strategic plan in place, that will help guide us to what those next steps need to be. And I would see the pros plan fitting nicely as an element within the strategic plan, because other departments are going to have to develop kind of their individual plans that roll up into the larger citywide plan on how they're going to move those initiatives and priorities forward. Parks was just, quite frankly, ahead of the game.
So if I'm hearing it correctly, we do have money for the overall city strategic plan, of course. And that, that will and can go towards all departments, including parks. And, and in the meantime, we should just keep our eyes and ears open and throw everything at the wall and see what sticks.
Yes.
And we're, we're working with the city manager's office with the TLT funding as well in regards to making sure that the data collection analysis they're looking at from the economic development side is looking at through a recreational lens as well. So a great data point I had when I was at state parks was, is I knew that every dollar spent in a state park generated $35 locally. And so it was an easy rubric for me to identify, I'm getting, this, this thing's caught bringing in $1,000 in revenue to the park. That means, you know, it's $35,000 locally. And I think those are the sort of things that we need to get to continue to selfishly show that our assets are generating not only the livability, quality of life, but also it's, it's, it's putting dollars in pockets. And, and, and those people coming here are spending, you know, an extra meal. You go to Lithia for a hike, you just go for that one little nature hike. Gosh darn it, now you got to go to Mix, right? Or you have to go and get, go to Brick or wherever, where the Brick Room, wherever it is. So all those things, you know, and then maybe, gosh, that was a really good meal. You might as well just stay at the hotel, right? You know, it's just figuring out how do we have that slippery slope of Ashland's nice. You know, it's like Hotel California.
And I will just add, I don't think there's one solution. So as you all are probably aware, the general fund is many, many lines of small amounts of revenue, essentially. A couple of large ones, obviously with property tax. But for example, you know, 1% increase in TLT would be $90,000 to the general fund, which is de minimis compared to the overall general fund. I'm not going to say every little bit helps, but, you know, I think it's, we're talking big dollars here for the services we provide over, over two years. And, you know, so we're going to have to kind of turn every stone and consider every option, as well as assess the demand for the service level from the community. as well as assess the demand for the service level from the community.
Right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weiner.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. So one of the things that I'll just say, one of the things I've been impressed with our discussions that I've had with you is the sort of level of granularity and structure that you're adding to sort of your understanding of Parks, financial structures and delivery and so forth. And so one of the things, and I always get the name wrong, cardiograph, something like that, but there's a host of other things that are gonna give you that sort of granularity that you need to really be able to inform the kinds of decisions that are being asked here. And while the PROS survey's gonna be fantastic to sort of give us an understanding of community priorities, then pairing that with that level of granularity and task allocation, time, cost, et cetera, is gonna be absolutely critical in order to be able to make those decisions. What's the timeline on getting that sort of implemented and implemented long enough to be able to give that information feedback to informed decisions?
If everything works on the Plinko Board correctly, when we're in our budget cycle next year, we'd have cardiograph implemented for at least 18 months to allow us to have some baseline data, as well as we'd have the other thing. And so as I look at it, is we have to figure out what our capacity is and what the needs are once, and then somehow figure out where, what can we do from that. And all of you play a big part in that, in setting those goals and objectives, as well as then directing that policy direction as we do move forward. So again, when we're here in 24 months, we'll have at least a year, hopefully 18 months of data that will help us tell our story, and then as we continue to move forward, we'll continue to fiddle with the tasks we do and align what we do with what we need to be doing.
Commissioner Adams.
I just wanted to take a moment to summarize what I'm hearing, and I will try to keep it short. I was thinking about, you know, the statistics that we hear, and I don't remember the exact number, that a certain number of families are one medical emergency or car accident away from, you know, really significant problems for their family. And, you know, I think that, it had me thinking about that when you were presenting the historic data, you know, this sort of paring down of doing more with less or trying to do the same amount with much less. And that presented with this sort of surprise of, hey, you need to cut 5% to 10%. It's like, we gotta cut real stuff, right? We gotta move kids, sorry. And what we've been hearing from the community is, we don't want to move, right? You know, we expect these services, they're important to us, they're important to our kids, they're important to our seniors. It's a good part of why people visit our town and spend money, you know, we're a tourist town, it's our economy, right? And I think, you know, that's our request to our friends on City Council is, hey, the community wants this level of service. And even that increase that we're asking you for, it's specific, right? That we want to develop a park out on East Main, which is an area that your body has identified for development, and particularly wanting to create some affordable family housing out East Main, if I remember our last meeting well. And having a park out there makes that a desirable place to live, it's also a place that would then create some property tax income, some systems development fees, you know, it's all circular, actually doing more as a city can create more revenue and then allow us to do more, right? School district funding too, thanks Eric. And, you know, so I get that it's a Band-Aid, you know, I think that's the word that Commissioner Weiner used last time. And I don't think it's a long-term solution, this 650 fee, but, you know, it's in your hands. We can pass a resolution and encourage you, but it's in your hands to decide on that. And I hope that, you know, we've got a cut right now, and there's a role for a Band-Aid sometimes. And it's not long-term, and I'm glad that we're bringing up other sources of revenue that we, as a community, are currently sort of missing out on relative to other communities. And we're having some of those same hard decisions at the Parks level too, right? Thinking about charging more money for the fields that our sports teams use. And we don't like to do that, right? That's more money that kids and their families are paying, and it's a norm for our area. And we gotta think about, you know, like, City Manager, Kato was bringing up, all these little sources of revenue that at the end of the day might add up to us breaking even and then being able to, you know, do the fun part of governing the city, which is thinking about the exciting things that we want to do next. And I can't wait to work with you guys on that in the future. This stuff's hard, but I appreciate you all taking the time to listen tonight.
Counselor Kaplan.
Great, thanks, thanks, Chair. So I'm hearing a whole lot of consistent messages here. What I've heard is that there, I'm pleased to hear from your presentation, Rocky, that there really is a pretty thorough, deep process already underway. You're doing your strategic plan, you've already started with the maintenance, what is it, the MMP? You've really started identifying things that, you know, in the next few months, some pencil sharpening to really get some savings, some cost reductions. But over the longer term, of course, it takes more time to really implement some things. So there's really, there's really some things that can go on already in this next few months, but then really into the future. I think for me, the appropriate timeframe is the biennium. We should be thinking about this biennium. I rocked back a little bit when you said two to five years. I think we've got to put the pressure on ourselves, it's not just you, it's us in the council and the rest of the general fund, you're just part of the general fund, and obviously not even a big part anymore, as you're saying, just a little, you're just a little guy, just a little guy in the general fund. So, and we're doing the same thing with other aspects of the general fund, and we all have to do this. My conclusion of this is that we need you, Rocky, and we need the commission, to really, you know, you're the ones that, you know, deal with this week in and week out, to really find those ways that we can make some headway to, you know, really reduce our costs. And there's gonna be some hard decisions having to do with that. But we, as a group, need to continue to get together, and I think having these meetings, and I think the productive nature of this meeting is encouraging, that we can work together to really, you know, follow through, and what are the things that we need to do as well that can be helpful, you know, as we go through our own strategic plan, that's something that we've got to do, I think, together. I think we have to commit to those kinds of things. And we're talking about revenue, other revenue streams, I think we should always be, you know, looking at other revenue streams. But I think we can't take our eye off the ball of some cost reductions, because we're gonna have to find, you know, ways to change the service, not reduce the service. And I like what you, I like some of the small things, you know, they're concrete examples, right? You called it hardscape, I think, I think it's, you know, that can make a little bit of a difference. There can be a lot of things like that. And at the same time, we can be looking at, you know, other revenue options as well that aren't just a utility fee. But I think this is what we need in order to really feel comfortable going forward with one of these three options. So I thank you for coming forward to this meeting with all these, these real sense of possibility and commitment to really dig in and do some of the hard things that are gonna be need to do, and we're gonna be supporting you with the general fund and the council as well.
Commissioner Dale.
Thank you. That's all right. Thanks, I appreciate, thanks, Chair. Yeah, so just kind of to do a reset, back to kind of 5 and 50, and that's how we started the conversation. And the issue is, relative to that, is while I get the quality of life and I get, you know, why people come here and so forth, the issue with 5 and 50 is that if someone moves here and they're purchasing a house because someone left, then there isn't that growth there, and they're inheriting the same tax base. So really what it is, is to, and I think that's ultimately, well, on both of these bodies, to figure out innovative ways, and we talked about it earlier, about creating some sort of informed growth where there is, you know, the more houses, the more, even affordable houses, but the more housing, the more places to have more people here because they come for Park. That's kind of what organically grows, every, you know, the general fund in general, you know, I guess that's why it's called the general fund, sorry, I've been here since 3:00 PM, so. But I guess I take, I'm a little hesitant to think about, you know, understanding market rates, like we talked about, I think this, we talked about in the Budget Committee too, which is we can't just raise rates because it's a supply and demand thing, you know. So if there's no demand because of the price point there, then the revenues go down, then they just go down. You could raise rates 1,000%, doesn't mean you're gonna get it, right? So I think what I'm looking for here is, we've talked about ways to increase revenue, we've talked about ways to cut costs, that's fine, I mean, that's just reality. But I think what I'm really kind of laser focused on is the new ideas, the innovation, the being able to say, okay, I want the second, third, fourth order effects. And I think Parks is a wonderful way to leverage things like the value of bringing people here, the events, the larger crowds, and people can say, okay, I'm coming here, I'm willing to do this because I know this is what the benefit is, they see the value. So I think that's, I'm, I think I'm hanging my hat on the PROS outcome, like there's, I'm feeling lukewarm, I'm trying to figure out what that Band-Aid looks like from a timeframe, because I don't want to go two steps back. But I, to be quite honest, I just wanna, I want to be in a place where we are thinking about Parks, honestly, you're not gonna think differently too much about police or fire, well, maybe fire to some extent, that's a totally different discussion. But Parks is where you can have some fun, you can play, you can do different things, you can come up with new ideas. And I think that's what this community and hopefully all of us are really looking for, is that, right? This is what's gonna drive economic benefit, this is what's going to change things, and I want, like we talked about, I think yesterday, we're at a study session, I want 21,000 people, and hopefully more eventually, to say, yes, I can get behind that because that's different, and I'll buy into that, because it's interesting and I know it'll, it's worth trying, because what's working now, or what worked then just doesn't work now irrespective of department. So.
Counselor Duquesne.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to piggyback on some of the comments that I've heard earlier. I agree, and I hear a lot about the money that Parks generates and the people that come here and enjoy the parks and the open spaces. I 100% agree with that. And so that, to me, just goes back to the TLT. I will speak to my colleagues later about the possibility of expanding that, because my question is, looking at long-term, I think that's important. Strategic plans are a must, and so that we don't find ourselves back here again. And most importantly, what was brought up earlier, so many people are an accident away from being homeless. And when I think about, we're already, if this 650 were to be implemented, that means that the residents of Ashland, their utilities would be hit $19.50 more. And that's not talking about the water, or the sewer, or the electricity. So when I look at things holistically, and I look down the line, I think that this, you're shaking your head no?
So we've already had a $1.50 fee and a $3 fee in place, so it would be...
Well, I'm looking at it, when it comes to you and the mail, okay, so if, when I, and we haven't looked at water, and we haven't looked at electricity, so everything is gonna be going up. So I'm looking at this holistically and how it's gonna hit people, and then how it's gonna hit the moms and the dads who have children on Little League and sports. So like I said earlier, talking about the tourism and the dollars and the people that come, so it's up to my colleagues and I to look at that opportunity, because there's gotta be a better way than putting the rate on the backs of the people, there's just so much. And we want people, and we want youth, and we want activity. So I would like for, I agree with Counselor Kaplan, I think we should have more meetings like this, so we don't find ourselves at the 11th hour ever again.
Mayor Graham.
So, Chair, is this where we want to make a transition to a more specific council discussion? Okay, thank you. So we are in a circumstance now, because we are in budget season, where we have been presented with the budget that has to be the budget at this point because of the funding reductions. And if there is going to be anything to do with a fee that is going to affect this particular budget cycle, it needs to be, we need to, the council needs to give direction to staff this evening to have them move forward with a fee. So what we need to do now is to transition this conversation to a council-only conversation as part of this meeting, to see if there is interest in moving forward with some amount of fee and with, and if so, what that might look like. So the floor is open for a conversation with the council. Counselor Dale?
Thank you, sorry, Mayor, I didn't want to jump together. So, yeah, so thank you. So this is to be to Sabrina and Rocky. So whether it's, we'll call it 650, or 5, or whatever, and I guess, you know what, actually, this is for you, Rocky, and I know that you've got the other set of bosses sitting here too, and this is council discussion, but I'm hoping that if we were to institute at least a $5 fee, let's say, does that solve a majority of the issues that we've been hearing from our youth sports community and from other things? I mean, there's some acute issues that are coming up against it. I want to make sure that if we do that, that a lot of these programs and services that a lot of the community is relying on, that that stress can be relieved from that, that, you know, I'll have a different conversation, discussion relative about the long-term. I'm interested, and we've used the word Band-Aid for several times here, I want to hear that that's in the cards if we do this.
If there was $5 for 24 months or 18 months, it would significantly reduce the reductions we'd have to make. So we would be able to address many of the reduction concerns that I've heard over the last few weeks on the pool, we'd be able to operate the pool at a higher level, the ice rink, we'll operate that at a higher level, we'd be able to have more, if not all, restrooms open, and we'd be working with our sports field users on whatever the rate is introduced in agreements and other things to help try to minimize any of those fiscal impacts that would be advantageous for all parties.
So that's a yes?
Yes.
Counselor Kaplan.
Thanks, I guess I was looking at my calculator for a second, so I missed maybe the last part of what you said. But following on, or in addition to, or I think following on Counselor Dale's question about the fields, I'm, this is not this time to have a discussion about the fees, that's gonna come to the council at a future date. But I know that the Parks Commission took decisions about the rates for fields and a really dramatic increase when it hadn't been raised for many, many years, fields and other things, I'm just using the fields as a standard, we've gotten a lot of commentary about that, a really dramatic increase on that. You said to the Budget Committee a little while ago, that if a fee goes through, it might be possible to bring back to the Parks Commission a possibility for amendment of that and smooth that in, not no increase, but an increase that's more negotiated with the direct users of that sort of thing. Did you answer Jeff the same way? Did I just repeat what he said?
Yes.
Okay.
The question was asked two different ways, and the answer's a little different, but essentially, the bottom line is, is that I can't reduce fees. So if there is a fee that's adopted by council... that's adopted by council annually, I can't reduce that without coming back to you.
Right.
Now, parks, yes, that's my understanding, Rick, is that I can't reduce the rate. I am, if it's approved, I'm asking for an ability to reduce it by 20%. But I can't waive fees, I have to come back to the commission. So we would have to work with council, commission, Park Commission to change, to propose new rates that would come back and amend the adopted miscellaneous fee booklet, paid booklet. So that's the, there's the nuance of it and why, where I was, what I was trying to address with the Budget Committee earlier, and in the response that I gave to the counselor to now, was that there are other ways that we can enter into agreements that would potentially be able to work within our fee structure and ensure that we are reducing our workload to then benefit, not a fee reduction, but there'd be an agreement. And so there's two tools that we have to use.
Got it. And I got a second part to my question, if that's okay. So you mentioned a $5.00 fee for either 18 or 24 months, that you would probably be able to do this. Well, that's why I was on my calculator, because a $5.00 fee for 24 months is, generates as much as a 650.00 fee for 18 months.
Correct.
And you're, so you're indifferent between the two?
I, it's not my decision when it gets implemented. And I think the question for counselors is, is if you are considering a park fee, is $5.00 starting earlier to have the impact? Or having it phased in later, which was the recommendation, to minimize that sticker shock initially in regards to the other fees that have been approved?
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. We just got out of a Citizen Budget Committee meeting where the majority of Citizen Budget Committee members recommended that staff look at increasing the parks budget by $1.4 million, which is that $6.50 fee. I have been reading emails, I've been listening to public testimony, and all my neighbors that have been stopping me in the grocery store. The overwhelming majority of people that I talk to are really concerned about the city's health, wealth, and beyond fees and, you know, the broader conversation, right? It's all related. The parks is related to the schools, the schools are related to our economic development, are driving all these things. At 78 dollars a month, I hear some of my least affluent friends telling me, yeah, I need, I need to pay this fee in order to keep the splash pad open so I can bring my kid there. I have had so many of these conversations. I really appreciate all the hard work and the pressure that's on staff, and these commissioners, and this council. I really strongly recommend that we accept that term, the short-term gap, call it a Band-Aid, that we bring this $6.50 fee, we implement it, we do our hard work, we do our strategic planning, we bring in consultants, we throw everything at the wall. We didn't have time this budget cycle, I get it, to have the communication rollout that some of us wanted. And, and here we are now, let's not have amnesia and forget that this next budget cycles are right around the corner, and we have a lot of work to do. But I, I'm going to seriously recommend, again, and early, often, every time I can, that we do what we can. And this is the lever that the commissioners recommend, that's here in the slide deck, that we go with the $6.50 park fee. That'll give us, you know, each family an additional $78.00 to deal with in a time where everything's tight and everything hurts. But I just hear so many of our community members and our values hanging their hats on not reducing these services. It's equity, it's livability, it's retention, it's so many things. So I appreciate this coordination and this collaboration. I look forward to more of it. But I can't say enough and often enough, I think we should adopt a $6.50 fee. Thank you.
So, the way that this needs to work, because it's a study session, is that the council cannot make any formal decisions here. We can provide guidance to staff and direction to staff. And the way that we do that is by getting a sense of agreement on the council without any sort of a formal vote. Yeah, there'll be plenty of time to speak. Did you need something before I start the process?
No, you could start the process and I'll speak later.
It's fine if you do. Other people went around. So if you'd like to make some comments before we start more of that process, it's fine.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I heard what was said, and I heard the word equity mentioned. This is not equitable. I heard, let's apply for whichever cost, and let's back out later. Once you go down the rabbit hole, it's very difficult to get out. I too hear from several residents, everybody loves parks, everybody loves open spaces, and there's got to be a better way. So, the way it is right now when it comes to giving staff direction, if it's the direction I think it's going to go in, I can't support that.
Okay. So what I would like to do is, is to break this conversation into a couple of different specific elements for the council to speak to. The first one is the amount of a fee that we would be talking about. So we know that the recommendation to us is $6.50 over, beginning in January of 2026. So for this biennium, it would be 18 months of funding. And we will take on the question of whether there's a time limit as a different element of all of this. We also know that a $5.00 fee over 24 months brings us the same amount of money. And I think to the point of, what is that impact to individual people in the community? That is less per month of an impact to people. And so for the first round, what I'd like to find out is, do you support a fee? And if you do, do you prefer the $6.50 fee that starts in January of 2026, or do you prefer a 24-month of $5.00? Okay? And we can just take, take people as they're ready to speak to it. Counselor Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, are you looking, just a point of clarification, are you looking just kind of for a yes, no, or can we add a little bit of context to why we would or would not do something?
You can add some context, but just know that we have several rounds. The next round will be, is there a time limit on it? Do we cap it at some point in time? And then the third question is going to be, are we attaching it to particular strategic planning and revenue and expense expectations, or, you know, a process by which the Parks Commission and the Department and the city staff would be investigating these various ways of reducing expenses and finding new revenue streams? So there's three different rounds, but we want specific answers. This first round, would you, are you interested in supporting a fee, and which of those two options?
I could certainly go first if you'd like.
Counselor Dale.
Okay, thank you. So, the short answer is, yes, I would support 5 for 24 months, but I am definitely going to expect, speak to the next two points.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Kaplan.
I also would support 5 for 24 months.
Counselor Hanson.
Either. However, I'm going to go with the commission's recommendation for 650 for 18 months. But I would accept either.
Counselor Duquesne.
No.
No. Okay. And I, I would support either, but I prefer the $5.00 at 24 months. Okay. So we knew, now we will move on to the question of a time limit. And that's, that's where we were talking earlier about, this, if this is a Band-Aid, then it is, then it almost needs to have a time limit of some sort. We've had some conversation about how long it would take to get fully implemented, potentially with some of the bigger processes. But is there interest in the council on having a particular time limit? I know the recommendation doesn't have a time limit at this point. So is there interest in, so the question for you is, is there interest in a time limit? And if so, what is that time limit in your mind?
Same order?
Sure. Or whoever, whoever wants to go in whatever order.
Yeah, so my answer is absolutely, I'm interested in a time limit. And I would, I would have to ask, and maybe this isn't a question that you can answer right off the top of your head, Rocky and Sabrina, is, is I would need to know, the question I would, would ask really is, is what is the shortest timeline that can be viable before we come back to that? And I'm not trying to make it overly complicated, but it is something where the reason that I am interested in the timeline is because these discussions are critical to have, and I want to have the breathing room for the strategic plan. But this cannot take a back burner to anything. So that's, that's what I'm interested in, if you could provide any context.
So my recommendation would be to put the fee in place for at least two bienniums, because the reality is--
Two bienniums?
Yeah, for four years. Because the reality is, the strategic plan is going to take, you know, six to 12 months to work through that whole process. We also have property we have to divest of, depending on the market, that will take months. So this is not a quick fix. Now, if we find ourselves not in need of the fee in two years, we can definitely end it, right? So if we found a solution. But like I said, there is no easy revenue solution, and we need to have this conversation about service level with the community, and that is going to take some time.
Comment, follow, I, okay, then I would just say as a statement, I hear you, I think I just, I would, I would not be in support of that. I think I understand the inefficiencies of having to, to revisit it on a more frequent scale, but I think that, or on a frequent timeline, but I think that that in and of itself drives the conversation that we're looking for with community on a more frequent basis. And I also think that if we are moving the ball forward relative to this, then I think that over those timelines, we actually have the, I mean, I know it's stress, I understand that there's some planning things, but I think that if we're all collectively doing our jobs, then it should almost be self-evident, I would think. So I'm willing to take that risk to continue to make sure that those conversations do not stop. You know, I'm tentatively leaning towards 24 months. I mean, I was starting at 12 in my mind. So I'm just, I think I'll pick a half and happy medium, but I will answer a little bit more clarity relative to the strategic stuff, because there's some other levers here that need to be discussed. But I'll say, no more than 24 months right now.
We don't have to go in the same order if anyone else wants to jump ahead.
I'm happy, I'm happy to go.
Go ahead, Counselor Kaplan.
I'm happy to go next. So, you know, I, I'm very happy with what, the process that we're putting in place here. And I think that it's incumbent upon all of us to make sure that we're sticking, sticking to it. So I don't really feel like I need to have, you know, a contract with America or something in order to hold this all, to hold us hostage. So I would favor not capping it. But I could understand, I can, I understand Counselor Dale's perhaps, you know, less, less confident feeling that we're going to be able to stick to our task, get it done. I think it's really on both, on both bodies, it's not really on one or the other. So I can understand that's difficult, you may want to have, you know, a little bit to hold our feet to the fire. But I would prefer to have no cap, although I could imagine supporting a fee with a cap, with a time cap.
Okay. Counselor Hanson.
Thank you. At my day job, my insurance just went up 48%. And every year I've been operating that business, expenses go up. I'm new to this counselor thing, this is only my second budget round, but none of the numbers have gone down. I believe that this fee is a part of our, part of our reality now. And I believe in our ability to flush out some, some better funding, to be more streamlined. However, I don't support a time cap. Future councils can take away a fee, let them do it, let us do that, but I don't want to put pressure on us. And I'm thinking that, you know, beyond Santa Claus and some other lies that I tell my family, I don't lie. And I'm, I'm not lying to myself here. We, we're, we're in a long-term budget crisis. And, and we need to, we need to look at solutions. And I believe this is a, this is a solution that's, that's part of our future.
Counselor Duquesne.
No, I'll wait.
You, you want to wait for--
Yeah, I'll wait.
So, so this is a separate question, though? I recognize that you're not in favor of a, of a, of a fee. But if the council were to go forward with a fee, would you be interested in having a time limit on it?
I can't, I'm not going to comment on that because I do not, I'm standing on the principle, and I don't see, I can't support this because of the way it's being presented. I can't support it. I look forward to more conversations so we don't find ourselves here again, but I'm not going to support this, so.
Okay, okay. I would be in favor of a, a two-year cap that is extendable. So the, the body would come back at the two-year mark and see what kind of progress we're making. Not, recognizing that not everything is going to be in place, not all of the changes are going to be made. But if we have been doing our job in, in both of our bodies, we should be able to make a good case for why this continues for a longer amount of time. And that to me is, is the rationale behind it. It's not a lack of confidence, but it is a recognition of how busy this work gets. And if you have a certain amount of time, that's how much time something takes. And, and again, it wouldn't be that the full realm of changes gets put in place in two years, but that there is a, there is a, a point at which we assess how we're doing in that space. And how are we doing against that longer-term timeline? And, and if we're doing well, and the, and there's a lot of support for carrying it forward, so that we can continue to put in those other pieces in play, then, then I think that that's what makes sense to me. The difficulty of this is this, there are five of us here, and this is an even split, which you wouldn't expect that we would be able to get to, but we do interesting things. So we have two counselors who have said that they don't want to see any sort of a cap, and two counselors that have said, or me, myself, and one counselor who have said that they would like to see a 24-month cap. So we need to talk through that and see if there's, is a way to get to, to one, to a decision.
Well, and if I may, Mayor, I guess the question would, would, is that something that we would need to make a decision tonight, given the fact that if there happens to me a majority for at least the two years, that at least staff can be able to do some sort of planning and know what they're doing relative to the biennium?
That's true. So what, that's a good point, Counselor, is that even with the 24 cap, that takes us all the way through the biennium. So the council can take it up, we will have a full, a full council at that point, when, if staff were to bring that forward to us, we could take up the time limit question then.
Yeah. And may I make one more comment before we move on to the next one? And I just want to address Counselor Kaplan's point, and I understand, and certainly nothing taken about that contract with America, other than, we see a lot of that at the federal level of, of the, or else, the, that, that kind of gamesmanship that just doesn't do the public any good. And I don't think that we ever intend to do that at the local level because we are just trying to keep clean water coming out of faucets. And we're trying to make sure that when you flush a toilet, that it goes somewhere, and lights come on, and garbage cans are emptied and so forth. So it was, my, my point, just to clarify, was not to have some sort of, sort of Damocles that's always hanging over every, it is really just to drive top-of-mind awareness and to continue that discussion that honestly is going to lead into the third topic, which is, we should be having that anyway. And this is just kind of that guarantee that that does. I don't, I don't want it to be some sort of gamesmanship or else. The commission drives policy, that's, that's their lane by charter, our lane is financial oversight. And somehow, these two pieces have to click together. And part of that is how I'm thinking through that.
Counselor Kaplan.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Counselor Dale, I appreciate, appreciate that. And, you know, sometimes it does, and I appreciate that, you know, there, you know, you're not intending for there to be gamesmanship or something, but sometimes it does, it's easy to slip into that in the process of a, you know, a hard discussion where, you know, we all have lots of, I think we have common interests, and maybe different ways of getting there. I think-- I think we can have a softer, I favor myself, a softer approach rather than a, than a hard-fisted approach. So, that's the spirit in which I made my comment.
Completely understand, thank you.
So, so let's go ahead, we'll hold that question off for a full council discussion. And then the last round to go is simply to talk about, are, is there anything that the council would want to say in association with this fee in terms of this process that we've been talking about? Is there a direction that we would like to give our staff in terms of not only bringing the fee back, but bringing back some sort of a process that we are agreeing to support the Parks Commission in doing over the course of the next two years? And we would, of course, write that with the Parks Commission, right? We would be involved, the leadership would be involved in drafting that and bringing it back. Is that something that we want to include in that discussion? Counsel Hanson?
I'd like to put that back on you, Mayor, because it's a great idea, but I'm curious, maybe I'm just exhausted now, but what does that look like? Or sound like?
So, Mayor, yeah.
Counsel, yeah, Counsel Captain.
I'm very much in favor of keeping our eyes focused on what we're trying to achieve here. I think we've talked about the process with the PLOs, with the strategic plan, with the very good things that I think Rocky and the Parks Commission are putting in place to really try to contain costs. I'd like to see, you know, some sort of metrics that allow us to track our progress together, both the council and the, and the commission together, so that when we come back, I guess we meet every six months, I'm happy to meet, you know, every three months if we need to, whatever we need to do, but to really make sure that we're working on, working this through together, and got a clear eye of where we're going, and where we're having success, and where success is more difficult. And then, and also where there's some difficult issues, you know, Rocky and Sabrina come up with some, you know, tough trade-off that they want to bring to us, and we'll have to sort it through as a group. So I'm looking for, I'd be looking for staff to bring back some metrics for that.
Does that help? Counsel Hanson? Yeah. And I think in the, in the near term, because we would be asking the staff to come back to us pretty quickly with this, it would, I would expect there to be a broad-brush explanation that, that this is being put in place to allow time for the PLOs plot process, and then looking at the various things that we've been talking about this evening, but that the metrics question is probably something that's going to take a bit more time out past the budget process, that we're going to have to have some joint meetings, we're going to have to work those through. So, that in the near term, that we would be asking for that 30,000-foot description, does that sound right to you?
Yeah, I'm happy with that. I would want our next, you know, joint meeting, I'd want to have that by our next joint meeting, six months from now, or whatever it is.
Yeah, or even sooner.
Or even sooner if possible. But it doesn't need to be done, for my, I don't believe it needs to be done before approving the budget.
Yeah, exactly, or, perfect. Thank you, Counsel Dale.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, again, I'm going to, I want to make, I want to make sure that this isn't, by no means is this intended to be kind of an or else, it's just, I just want to express a sense of urgency, I suppose, both short-term and long-term. And so, my ask from a strategic standpoint would be, and this is my ask to the commission, because it's not my job to direct their policy, I'm a citizen of Ashland, and you guys are my commission for Parks, so my ask is, is that this is, this is kind of in the spirit of what we did when we created the ordinance and the department, and we wrote into code that we would be doing these joint things, I think it's wonderful. But one of the things that I would need is, is I would like to see very much the commission direction to Rocky to really get the, something sooner rather than later, knowing full well that we can kind of, I think, count on this, I believe the head nod count, but I want to make sure that we have things in order relative to the acute issues that have come up in the last couple of weeks, and that that's communicated to the public, and that's communicated to, so that, you know, we're all sitting here trying to make decisions so that we can plan accordingly. Our community members need to be able, and their lives and their families need to be able to make decisions, too. So they need to know sooner rather than later of how that's going to look, and that we do your legitimate best to try to get that squared away, and that that can be done with some reasonable sense of expediency from a commission's standpoint, would be my ask. That's part one. Part two is then, and this will be a longer discussion at a later date, I think, in terms of council, is broader budget discussion. We discussed about forecasting instead of, in addition to reporting, and so I think that, that will, you'll play a big role in that, Rocky, relative to Parks. So we can, again, the whole idea of this was, how do we not find ourselves in this position again to the best extent possible? And the only way is that early and often, detection of these things, and that's the joint efforts of this, these two bodies to be able to, you're coming every quarter, you know, just as part when Marianne does, and it's something where like, we, we have to provide financial oversight and accountability, that's what councils do. You guys go do what you do with policy, and that's great. We have to figure out how to get that to work together and tell that story, and it's open to everybody, and we go. So I would say every six months or so is what I'll, what I'll be asking for in the future relative, or every quarter, I guess I would say, but that's a, that's a future thing, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I would say every four months, especially now, because I do feel a sense of urgency, I think the whole community feels a sense of urgency, and that is why we spent all the time to make sure that we're a department and things like that. So I, moving forward, especially now, I would love for all of us to get on the calendar quarterly, and look at where we are and where we're going, so that we can measure what we are doing and what we've done.
Sabrina, I recall that in our ordinance, we have identified quarterly at least two, well, at least two meetings a year, so we can adjust that anytime that we feel the need to.
Yeah, at least two meetings a year, and sorry, I interpreted that as Rocky doing a report quarterly to council about the progress that APRC in here are making, so I think I just need some clarification on how often we're getting together versus how often Rocky's reporting.
Right. And I don't know that we need to get to that level this evening, because I think that's maybe a bigger council discussion, but, but yeah, and it's been a long couple of days. So, so what, what I hear, Counsel, any other counselors? Counsel Captain?
Well, I have a question, so go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I was, I'm looking to sum up, so go ahead and ask your question.
You know, my question is about the next step, because I'm looking about timing.
Okay. So, so this is what I'm hearing, so let me, let me check this across, that this evening the council would provide direction to staff to move forward with a 24-month, $5 fee, that we will take up the question of a time limit when the council has more time to discuss it, we don't have to make that decision tonight. But that in bringing that fee forward, there will be a discussion of the process that we are looking to support over time. And one of the things that I would like to add to that is that the council needs to be doing its own general fund work at the same time. So when I, I want to check my understanding of this, when I, when we say we want to get these two bodies together to have these discussions and talk about our progress, I understand that to mean that the council is also responsible in those meetings for coming forward with its progress in terms of the general fund overall, and then the Parks Commission can report on its progress related to its specific element within the general fund, because these things are moving forward concurrently. Is that accurate? Does that sound right to the counselors? Counsel Hanson?
It does, and let's recognize that I believe proportionally, Parks has been hit with the brunt of this cost reduction relative to other departments, because it is the third-largest department within the city of Ashland. So I don't think I'm expecting magic from the Parks Department to say, you know, after two years, we've, you know, figured out how to do this with eight FTEs, that's ridiculous. Parks is taking the brunt of the general, the lack of money in the general fund, and that's what this fee is going to be a Band-Aid for. So I think you hit the nail on the head, the whole city needs to do our work.
Yes.
You know? And sure, the Parks Department will innovate, will come forth with ideas, but am I expecting for them to find 1.4 million under rocks in Lithia Park? No, I am not. We all need to do that. All the departments have taken a hit, and I appreciate staff and everybody that's tightened their belts, but I think you hit the nail on the head, and I appreciate that. We all need to do the work here.
Mayor, yeah, thank you. And if I may respond, so Counsel Hanson, I agree with you. I think, though, where I would add a little bit of context would be something like, these, we're not expecting magic to happen every quarter, but what we are able to do, as much like we all do in businesses, we need to identify problems early, so if we need to pivot, or we need to make a decision, or we need to go in a different direction, or we need to try something new, that we're not playing defense, we're on offense there. So I'm not, I'm not having the expectation of magic just happens and we've figured out with them, I mean, there's going to be these struggles, but at least we're having visibility of what are the steps, are we moving it? What help does staff need from us from a leadership standpoint to be able to make things more efficient or whatever? But we just can keep our eyes on it on a routine basis, I think would really help in both directions, I believe.
And just to add to that, council is really good at adding things to staff's plate, and so, you know, both bodies can look at what we can do to love the things we have better, more so, than create more, you know what I mean? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And I think that that also behooves the leadership of these bodies to be very actively participating and taking off as much of the strain as we can. Counsel Captain, did you have any?
Yeah, my question really was, I guess as much as anything for Sabrina, this is direction, you got kind of direction from council in terms of loading the budget that allows the addition of 1.4 million to the Parks budget for the next biennium. This is eventually going to need a council resolution.
So we'll look to bring a resolution at the next council meeting?
Which is the 20th of May, the day before, day before the final budget committee meeting, that's fine?
Yeah, and so that, we'll bring a draft one with, based on the direction here, and you can always amend it. We'll model the language we've been using for the fees, and then we can have that council discussion on that day.
Okay. In time for the final budget committee meeting?
Yes, because as we all know, the presented budget is not the amended budget, which is typically, the amended budget is what is adopted by council, so I'm sure there will be additional changes.
Thanks.
Counsel Dale?
Thank you, Mayor. So just about that, and that may be, actually, to you, Mayor, given the motion earlier in the budget committee, so this, what I want to ensure is it's kind of not over till it's over, and I, we've got good, you know, good vibes going here, but we directed staff earlier in our budget committee meeting to do some work relative to trying to figure out the what-ifs, and so, is that something that you'll still be doing, or not? Or, I guess I would-
Yeah, so right now, the budget committee has basically asked us to allocate more funding towards Parks, which would mean taking away funding from other general fund departments, but given the discussion tonight, we won't make those adjustments until we have the council discussion with the fee, because it will all be rolled up into the amended budget anyways. So we can, we'll start the work on the back end, but it will not be presented.
So, so I could, I would like to clarify my intention, because I'm the one who amended that motion. Knowing that this conversation was happening this evening, what, the intention of that, and why I worded it the way I did, was depending on how this evening turns out.
Yeah.
If this council gave direction to staff to move forward with a $5 fee, then that's what it does.
Yeah, we're not doing anything.
You're not doing any of the, you're not figuring out where another $1.4 million could come from, that's, that's not the intention.
But we're ready to pivot, because we still have a conversation to have, so-
Right, yes.
We're just prepared for anything, but my point is, it isn't over until it's over. The amended budget is what council will be ultimately adopting, because I'm sure there will be additional changes, not just this one, so.
Yes. Yes, so just, yeah, to be clear, we're not looking for, where else might you find 1.4 million? Okay. And then I also heard a discussion this evening that we wanted to have that, the first joint meeting post-budget sooner rather than later. Yes. Sooner rather than later. Okay. Is there anything else? Does that sound right, the direction that we've given staff tonight in terms of the conversation we have had? That sounds right? Okay. I will pass it back over to Chair Bachmann.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have come to the end of our meeting. Anybody have more for the good of the group?
I just want everyone to know that the gold under the rocks left in 1852, so no digging in Lithia Park, please.
On that, meeting adjourned.